At 5:00 AM, 7:00 AM, we're going to start the meeting of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, meeting jointly with the Mendocino County
(inaudible)
We're going to speak right into the microphone. This is the meeting of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, meeting jointly with the Mendocino County Employees Retirement Association. Sitting next to me is Randy Goodman, who's Chair of the Retirement Association, and we are jointly going to be running today's meeting. First item of this is run all them around the pledge leaders.
Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Here.
Supervisor Hammer?
Here.
Chair Journey?
Here. Roll call for the Mendocino Board of Retirement. Tim Knudsen?
Here.
Sherry Schatmeyer?
Here.
John Sakowitz?
Here.
Ted Stevens?
Here.
Jerry Harris?
Here.
Catherine Kevins?
Here.
Craig Walker?
Here.
Richard Shoemaker?
Here.
And Supervisor Dan Journey?
Here.
And myself, Randy Goodman.
Okay, thank you for coming here. We're going to have pledge leaders next.
This is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting has only a handful of things on the agenda. The very first item is our welcoming remarks by the Chair of the Retirement Board, and then myself as Chair of the Board of Supervisors. After each of these agenda items, members of the public will have the opportunity to speak right after each of these agenda items. So Randy, I'd like you to give some welcoming remarks.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Journey. My name is Randy Goodman. I'm the Chair of the Board of Retirement. I'd like to welcome the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Retirement, and members of the public today that are attending this afternoon. MCARA, the Board of Retirement, I think we currently have a very excellent Board of Retirement. We all come from diverse backgrounds. We complement, we challenge each other, some more than others. Mostly have a new Board of Retirement since the Great Recession. A lot of these members are new to the Board. There should be two that have been required. Sherry Schatmeyer, she's required to be on the Board, and Ted Knudsen's been on the Board for quite some time. And everybody else, I think, is new to the Board since the recession. I'd like to cover some significant events that have occurred since the last Board meeting, that joint meeting in December 2011. It's been a little while since we've done this. We've hired a highly qualified retirement administrator. Actually, I think we've hired two since then, but change isn't the best. We've adopted a new strategic plan. Just recently, we adopted a new strategic plan with clear measurable objectives and strategies aligned with these objectives. One accomplishment that, as of January 1, our pension automation system has gone live. So some of you retirees out there will probably notice that. Come summertime, the new module will be coming in where you'll be able to actually log into a web portal, view your accounts, and current employees will be able to estimate their benefits and that kind of thing. Since 2011, we've decreased our rate of return assumption from 8% to 7.75% in 2011, from 7.75% to 7.25% in 2014. These decreases resulted in significant increases in our unfunded liability. We've reviewed investment for fee efficiency and identified opportunities to reduce these fees by more than $100,000 annually. That's an ongoing learning project. We've adopted a policy to only use excess earnings to reduce the unfunded liability or as a reserve against future economic downturns. As of 2011, MCARA now has more retirees than active members. The result of this is that the benefits being paid out now exceed the contributions that are being paid into the plan. As of January 1, 2013, we've implemented PEPRA. Currently, 33% of all active members are now under PEPRA. This equates approximately a 38% employee turnover for the county since 2013. Even though this kind of, I mean, I read that, and it just kind of blew me away that I didn't think it would be that large, but it is. MCARA received a favorable Internal Revenue Service IRS determination letter, compliance statement regarding its voluntary correction program. We've outsourced the administrative review of disability applications with an expected cost of savings of more than $10,000 annually. We've hired a custodial bank, and by having MCARA staff manage the RFP, able to save about $50,000 in consolations fees in that service. We received the Government Finance Officer, GFO, certification of excellence regarding MCARA's comprehensive annual financial reporter, CAFER. I think we received that every time we submitted a CAFER to the GFOA. So hopefully, the Board of Retirement, the Board of Supervisors, and the public work constructively together regarding the long-term viability of the pension system and the reduction of the unfunded liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And so in my welcoming remarks, I wanted to just give a little bit of background of the fiscal reforms that the county has put in place in the last several years since the recession. And since the recession, there's been a complete turnover in who's on the Board of Supervisors. So right after the crash, two supervisors took office, Supervisors McCowen and Brown. And I remember in the Fourth of July Parade of 2011, they were walking through the parade with a wheelbarrow, cleaning up the mess, was sort of the theme of their parade entry. And the county has been reforming its finances since then. It's been running with fiscally balanced budgets. The county also phased out and eventually eliminated the retiree healthcare plan. That eliminated $130 million in debt that the county had as liability. In fact, Ken Churchill, who's a community member in Sonoma County who does financial analysis of county pension plans, he looked at all the county pension debt and funding and included their retiree healthcare debt if they had retiree healthcare debt. And because Mendocino County does not have retiree healthcare debt, Mendocino County, with the 20 independent plans, was placed in the mid-pack. You know, not, I'm not saying this was, they were wildly overfunded, for sure. They were all underfunded, but at least Mendocino County was in mid-pack because it eliminated the liability of the healthcare plans. In addition, the Board of Supervisors has adopted a less expensive pension plan, as Randy mentioned. They were already working on this prior to the state legislature passing the PEPRA law. And they adopted it in December of 2012. And the main cost savings there is that any county employee hired after January 1, 2013, when they do eventually retire, they'll have a 0% COLA when they retire. So unlike all other employees hired prior to that who have a COLA of up to 3%, all new hires will have a 0 COLA. And that's the single largest savings in the new plans that are available to county employees. Finally, as Randy mentioned, the county and the Retirement Board jointly reduced the assumed rate of return two different times, from 8% to 7 3/4 to 7 1/4. At this point, the assumed rate of return on investments is lower for the Retirement Association here in Mendocino County than it is with Cowper's. They're, at this point, still at 7.5, although they're looking at lowering it to 7 1/4 or maybe lower as well. Finally, when we get to Agenda Item Number 4, which is an opportunity for Board members to suggest any new ideas or old ideas to save money, we'll, of course, welcome members of the public comments at that point as well. But also, as I mentioned earlier, we're welcoming public comments on each of these agenda items. So again, we're welcoming your comments, welcoming any suggestions. And before we get to Item Number 2, we open it up for public comments under Agenda Item Number 1, welcoming remarks.
Is this the appropriate time for comments about things that aren't on the agenda?
Yes, things that are not on the agenda, you could probably fall in your welcoming remarks.
My name's John Dickerson, and thank you for this meeting. A few years ago, the Government Accounting Standards Board finally admitted that their pension financial reporting rules were deeply flawed and imposed very extensive reforms. And the county was forced to use these rules in your 2015 audit that was released last week. Last year, you reported the county had $80 million more than your debt. But the new rules just forced you to write off a worthless $30 million pension asset and list $130 million of unfunded pensions owed to the pension fund as a bona fide debt for the first time. Since we also owe another $70 million borrowed to shore up the pension fund in the past, that means we have $200 million of debt caused by unfunded pensions. We also have $200 million of assets, and that means that unfunded pension debt, all on its own, completely wipes out our county's assets. Since we owe $50 million of other debts, instead of the $80 million of positive net worth you reported last year, in fact, we're $50 million in the hole. And we already know that next year, you have to report a $20 million increase in unfunded pension debt owed to the pension fund. The reason why all this happened is because our county really and truly incurred about $150 million of real pension expenses in the past that have never been reported to the people until last week. So much for the notion of a balanced budget. The official payment schedules for the county's pension bonds and unfunded pension payments over the last decade and into the future to pay today's debt add up to 2/3 of $8 billion. That money won't directly provide one minute of services, you won't pay one dime of salaries, it won't fill one pop-up. This year, the county will pay about $25 million in pension and pension debt payments. That's about 1/3 of our county's local tax income. Employees will pay about $5 million, 1/5 as months. That's how much the county should be paying. Could you have used the next $20 million? Would employees today have higher salaries and more colleagues to help them work? How would mental health services used to be have been different? How many miles of county roads could have been repaired? We don't know when the next recession will be, but we know with absolute certainty it's coming. Current bull markets lasted a year longer than average. Some say we've already started the next pair. Maybe so, maybe not. But on average, stock markets lose 1/3 of their value in recessions. You've been forced to do a lot of very unpleasant things, and you've done a number of other good things, and that's true. But this debt is too big, it's too dangerous. It would be far better for everyone if we could find the problems that need to be solved now, but I really do fear it's going to take the next recession to force enough people to realize the changes made today are nowhere near enough. And by that time, we're going to be in a lot worse shape.
And just to clarify for those, we do have a timer here, as we have at all Board meetings, three minutes, and we're going to go out in two and a half minutes, maybe three minutes.
You're safe here. My name is Ken Fowler, and I thank you both Boards for this collective appearance today, listening to all our comments. But I'm in this, I have a real concern in this. I've been involved with this function for several years now. My business, I'm a businessman here in town, the retirees themselves, and all of us are really going to be impacted terribly if the direction keeps going the way it is. So I'm looking at this, I look back, and I think originally, this comes down, in my view, to decisions made by the Board of Supervisors, asked Board Supervisors, promising too much without consulting experts to give them a math. Money has been spent, money has been promised, money's been made retro, retroactive, and we got in this position we are today. So the August throw to the retirement, and the Retirement Board is doing the best, not doing the job that I'd like to see done, but they're doing their job. All good people, but we're not getting where we need to go. We couldn't have gone in 2008, I think is the figure, $20 million upside down in the pension fund to the current $180 million and actually be accomplishing something. So you're dependent on your actuarial firm, in this case Siegel, putting the figures together that you adopted and live by. And in my view, well, in my business, if I had somebody giving me that kind of advice, I would have terminated him a few years ago because we're not getting the kind of input we want. Or there's something going on that none of us on the outside know about. And I'd like to know what the answer to that is, but we continue on. We've had arguments on the Retirement Board about moving the anticipated rate of return from 8% to 7.5% to 7.25%. When the actual rate of return over a 10-year period's been in the neighborhood of, correct, 6.6%. So each year we do this, we kid ourselves and add more to the total on the other hand. And this is the kind of thing that's just plain, has to be correct. We're all in a box, nobody sees the way out. So I can only ask you to address this thing head-on, both groups get together, and see if we can come up with some answers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stan Anderson from Fort Bragg. I know many of the Boards recognize me, have spoken over several issues. I'm only representing myself today, just a city poor taxpayer in Mendocino County. A number of years ago, I spent 10 years on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the City of San Jose. Our commissioners are supposed to advise, you know, council members on various, in this case, parks and rail issues. But I also learned that one of the jobs of a commissioner, it was just as important, was that it wasn't to tell the council what they wanted to hear, it's what they needed to know. And what you need to know is Mendocino County is bankrupt. We've got more debt than we've got assets to pay it off. And it isn't as though you or your predecessors on the Boards haven't been aware of it. It sneaks up on you. Each year, the Board of Supervisors makes payments to the pension fund and the pension obligation bonds. That's taxpayer money that doesn't go for libraries, roads, mental health, social services, animal care, and most of other services that the county is supposed to provide. This is a condition known as financial insolvency, and it shows up in different ways. In 2011, the Board of Supervisors asked orders to pass a tax to fund libraries because there wasn't enough money in the budget. In 2012, that library tax raised about $1.3 million. But that same year, the Supervisors paid $13 million into the pension fund and the pension obligation bonds, 10 times the amount of money that was raised by that library tax. In 2014, Supervisor Journey added a line item, they had to add a line item to the budget to ensure that there would be $2 million or so for basic road maintenance in the county. You've been cutting back services for years to feed the county pension fund without telling the public. Now, thanks to a change in the government accounting standards, this 800-pound elephant that's been ignored for years is open in the room. One other item I'd like to point out, and I'm speaking, in this case, to all the county employees, and this is something you need to be aware of. I have in my hand here a $1 bill. Now, I'm sure many of us are old enough to remember when this used to say "silver certificate." It says, now it says "Federal Reserve note." What you see is an IOU on the national debt. Well, last year, between the county and the employees, they put $20 million into the retirement fund, or they thought they did. In fact, they paid out $32 million for pensions. What that means is the $20 million that you folks put in, you don't have anything there but a piece of paper to show it, because as soon as it came in, it went out. And what's more, they had to borrow, or they had to take out, $1 million a month, $12 million to pay for retirement.
Okay, that concludes public comment on this part of the agenda. We'll now go to our, we'll now go to our second item on the agenda, which is a presentation on the 2015 Actuarial Valuation Report by Siegel Consulting. And because of the way the screen projector goes forward, I think some of us may be moving our seats during the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Journey and Chairman Goodman. I am Paul Angelo with Siegel Consulting out of our San Francisco office. I'm joined with Andy Young. And as, what's on the agenda is, you know, it says the 2015 Actuarial Valuation Report. We presented this report to the Retirement Board in December, and it had a detailed discussion. I think my sense of the meeting today is the more that we hear from the commissioners, the more that we hear from the Supervisors and the members of the Board, the less we hear from the actuarial, perhaps the better. We would like to get to the question part. We also have a discussion about the second half of our presentation today. We'll focus on the unfunded liability, very briefly talk about where it came from, and a little, a policy paradox that comes as far as your, sort of your actuarial decisions. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to start with just a couple of the slides that have some terminology. This is, I think, is both for the members of the Board of Retirement, who always tell me they can't hear it enough times, and also for the members of the Board of Supervisors. Then we are going to go into the actual bound evaluation report, but we are not going to spend much time. You know, I just want to show the Supervisors what are some of the key pages that when we present this in detail to the Retirement Board, to give you a sense of what happened from last year to this year. Actuarial reports are not famous as easy reading, but we do try to encourage all policymakers and the member of the Board of Retirement, you know, don't be, don't be afraid of the actuarial report, you know, and how to find things in there. But we're going to start with just a couple, you're going to hear terminology in the context of the actuarial report that you probably don't hear anywhere else. And we just want to give you a quick sense of what these things mean. What we do is, when we do the actuarial valuation, we make a lot of assumptions about what benefits will be paid in the future. And we determine how much money you would have to have today in order to pay all those benefits of present value, of future benefits. And then we determine for each active member how much you would have to pay each year so that if all of our assumptions come true, you'd have enough money to fund those benefits. That amount that you pay each year is called a normal cost. It's a way of thinking of the value or the cost of the benefit for each year of service. So whenever we talk about funding a pension plan, the first thing you have to do to stay even is fund the normal cost. And the other thing we do is, we look at what normal costs should have been paid in the past, and how much would you have in the fund today if you paid all those normal costs and you had, you would earn the investment, the assumed return on that. That amount is what's called the actuarial accrued liability. Big term, I always slow down when I say it, but what that really, again, is, it's the amount you would have in the fund today so that all you had to pay in the future was the normal cost. And then what's left, the part of that future value that you haven't paid yet, is the future normal cost. So then what we do is, we take that accrued liability, we compare it to the actual plan assets, and that gives you the number that always makes the headlines. So this is where, for the whole plan, we've now taken this total value of benefits, we got a past piece and a future piece. But again, this actuarial accrued liability is just the cost that have accrued to date for your active members and also for your retired members. So we compare that accrued liability to the assets, and that provides the number that everybody talks about, which is this UAAL, the Unfunded Actuarial Accrued Liability. It is a budgeting item, and I think some of the commenters today understood this. It's really a measure of assets today compared to costs that have already accrued. And if the assets are less than the costs that have accrued, then you have to make a contribution in two parts. So anytime you look in the actuarial report, when you go to the section on contributions, there's always two pieces. The part down here in the bottom left, that's the current year's normal cost, that's how much you pay to stay even. And then if your past costs, that's that actual accrued liability, if they are not covered by assets, which means you have an unfunded actuarial accrued liability, you need to make a payment toward that, a sort of a mortgage payment. And that's what's here at the upper right, where it says the amortization. Amortization is just the process of paying off this unfunded past cost. So the contribution from the employer always comes in two pieces. There's a normal cost piece to stay even, and there's a payment toward the unfunded to catch up. Now, by the way, the member contributions actually are part of the normal cost. What's shown here is the total normal cost. It's actually paid partly by the members and partly by the employer. But the unfunded liability payment is paid entirely by the employer. So now we're going to go into the actual report, and then we're just going to flash pages of the report up on the screen. It's not going to be easy to read. I think you have copies of that, hard copies up, Phil, put it on your desk. But just want you to keep in mind, whenever you talk about a current contribution, there's the normal cost, which is the cost of current service to stay even, and then there's a catch-up payment to amortize or pay off any unfunded actuarial accrued liability. Okay? And by the way, this is a very loosely scripted presentation, so if there are questions from either of the members of the Board of Supervisors or from the Board of Retirements you go through, please feel free to ask them as we go along. But we'll also take some pauses for questions. This is one of those pauses. So again, all we've done so far is terminology. Now I'm going to go into the actuarial report and see where these terms show up. I see people kind of nodding their heads. So with this, we're going to make a switch. And there it is. Over to this. So this is the, this is the cover page of the actuarial, of the actuarial report, not the actuarial accrued liability, excuse me. Again, this was presented to the Retirement Board in early December, was adopted by the Retirement Board. This is the June 30 of 2015 valuation. It sets, it looks at the experience of the plan from the last valuation, so from June 30 of '14 to June 30 of '15, reviews that experience, the financial impact of that experience on the future cost of the plan. And then it shows, it calculates the funded status of the plan, and then it also calculates the contribution rates for the members and the employers that will go into effect for the next fiscal year. So this June 30, 2015 valuation actually sets the contribution rates starting July 1, 2016, so it's coming up. And immediately, we drive a little bit, like all of our actuarial reports, it's sort of in pyramids form. You know, Section 1 is what I'm going to look at. It has a narrative, just text describing the major things that happen, then a couple pages of numbers. Then Section 2 gets into a little more details. Section 3 has a lot of reporting schedules, and finally, Section 4 is the basis of the valuation. Most of the time that we spend with the Board, when we go through the report, we walk through Section 1. And what you'll see, if I just tab in here to Section 1, you'll see that for each of the major items, in the left column, there's a reference page, and that's where you can find more information on that particular item. So again, we go through this in quite a bit of detail with the Retirement Board. There's a lot of, for example, there's demographic information here about how many people came into the plan, how many people retired. There's summaries of all the active folks and the retirees in terms of their data. But what we tend to focus on with the Board, with the Retirement Board, is what happened from last year to this year. And so this first bullet here, for example, it talks about that the valuation, the funded ratio, where you compare the assets and liabilities, actually remained fairly flat at around 70%. It was 69% versus 70%. On a market value basis, it actually went down slightly from about 76% to 73%. But the thing that we really want to focus on is, if you jump in the report to page 43, which is in Section 3, Andy's going to get there while I flip to it in my hard copy here. And again, this is, in a dimly lit room, it's hard to really study the details of an actual report, but this is partly to help the Board of Supervisors members know where to find information. What this page shows is how you got from the unfunded liability last year to the unfunded liability this year. What this shows is, it was at about $180 million in the June, I'm sorry, $180 million, $180 million in June 30, 2014. If all of the assumptions become true, it would remain fairly flat, coming in about $180 million. And then the next items show that during the year, these are all the major events, financial events that happened that affect that number. So the first one is, there actually was a gain on assets because we look at sort of an average return over the last five years, what's called a smooth value of assets. That's in order to manage your contribution volatility. On that basis, there was a gain of about $6 million. We also had a situation where salaries grew slower than assumed. Now, a lot of times with actuarial stuff, things that are bad for regular people are good for the funding of the plan. We talk about, you know, mortality. You know, if people live longer, that's good for them and their families, but it actually for them and their families, but it actually makes the plan look more expensive. This is one of those where if salaries do not go up at the about 4% a year that we assume, it's hard on the members, but it actually reduces the liabilities of the plan. So we actually had about a $1.7 million decrease in the unfunded liability because salaries grew slower than assumed. The next one that we have is, because the rate from the previous year to, two years ago to last year went up, that actually causes a loss because the, the rates are implemented. There's a one-year lag between the valuation date and the, and when the rate's going to affect. That had an effect of about $4 million. Then there's another item of about $5 million. Now, you know, if you look back at this chart, back for example, after the 2008-9 market downturn, where with five years smoothing, we basically had five years in a row of recognizing losses. That's when you saw some very large loss numbers at the first item here. This is also where you will see, if we had a change in assumptions, it was mentioned that we had a lower investment return assumption in 2011, and again in 2014, that would also show up on this page. Now, we did not have any assumption changes between the 2014, 2015 valuation. That's why you don't see that here. So again, this is one page that just has a lot of information on about what happened from last year to this year. The other page that I will look at, which is very similar, and it's in section two. On page 19, section two. And this is also mentioned in the, in section one where we have that summary. This is a very similar reconciliation, but now, instead of looking at what happened from last year to this year and how it affected the unfunded liability, now we're going to look at how what happened from last year to this year affected the employer contribution rate. So these are very similar items. Now, this number at the top, this 32.99, that is the average employer contribution rate over all of your tiers. We like to point out that there's actually no one in the plan, individual, for whom the contribution rate is at 33%, because this includes both the general tiers and the safety tiers. It includes the old legacy tiers and also the new pepper tiers. But it's a sort of a single number composite that shows you the trends in the contribution rate. So the punchline here is, the, the rate is actually going down from last year to this year. So the rate for fiscal year that started June of, July 2015, that's the rate that's in effect right now, the rate that goes into effect in July 2016, which are the ones that are in here, actually on the average will be slightly lower, about a half a percent, going from 32.99 down to 32.55. You're going to see each of these items, pretty much the same items we saw before. So the effect of the invested return, more favorable. That alone reduced the contribution rate by about 3/4 of a percent. That's the .74. The fact that salaries went up slower than assumed, that's about another quarter of a percent, .23. You can see the other items. And you do have a fairly large other item here that includes, as it says in a footnote in another place, that we actually had fewer than expected deaths in the plan. Again, it's good for the members, but it actually increased your liability and had an increase in cost. Now, again, I'm not, I'm inclined in a, in a sort of an unfriendly setting here, because it's hard to read a report in this kind of detail, but this just gives you an idea of where some of the information can be found that will get you from last year to this year. I think at this point, addressing the chairs, we're open to any questions about what's in the actual report. We are then going to turn to a little bit easier to see, a set of slides that will talk about what happened to the unfunded liability, how we got where we are today. But before we do that, I wanted to invite any questions from, I think we're still under the same agenda, we're not leaving the agenda, but I did want to invite any questions either from the supervisors or from the retirement board members on, on sort of the guts of the actuarial report here. And again, I will stress, this is a little bit more of a higher overview. When we're sitting down with the retirement board, we tend to roll up our sleeves, flip through the report page by the time I see a couple smiles. The board members know what that's about. But we want to keep this a little bit higher level for the members of the board of supervisors.
Mr. Kedden.
Paul, could you look at page 22 and tell us the effect of, the effect of the covered payroll going down, total magnitude in 2007 or 2008, I guess. It went down considerably every year. Earlier, you mentioned that you assumed salaries are going to go up by 5%. When in actuality, they go down by much more than that. Are we not applying the same rates or the correct rates because, because of the assumption they were going to go up and they actually went down?
Yeah, there are two things that will affect. By the way, we have seen this with all of our cases in the period from 2009 to about, to, really, almost to today, really, certainly through about 2014. And that is, that we have seen, we have not seen increases in total payroll. Now, there are two things that affect total payroll. One is whether individual members are getting about a 4% pay increase, which is what we assume. And we did not see individual salaries growing at that rate during the period from 2009, 10, 11, and 12. But the other thing, this covered payroll, when we do our valuation, we assume that headcount is going to remain constant. So when we are taking your unfunded liability payment and developing it as a percentage of payroll, we assume that the headcount's going to be constant, which means that your total payroll, think about if your headcount is constant, then your total payroll is going to grow the same as your average payroll. And so that would be you growing about 4%. So what I think we're seeing here is, not only did individual salaries not increase, but also the active headcount did not, did not remain stable. And so what you've got here, Mr. Newton, is two things happening. One is individual salaries not growing as fast as assumed. But the other is, we saw some contraction in the size of county payroll, which by the way, this year reversed. Andy, have a page we can look at to see that real quick?
Yeah, I think it's best to take a look at page number one.
This is, this is Arabic one, so it's actually in section two. Get that? So this thing, it says chart one. This is fairly striking. If you look at the active members, the first, well, the first column is the year. The second column is the active members. You can see the peak in 2008. There were 1,400, 1,410 active members in the plan. Then became the decrease in active payroll that I just referenced. So you'll see it goes to 1,254, 1,129, and then it levels out at about 1,100. So really, it was that big decrease from about 1,400 members in 2007, 2008, to about 1,100 members continuing through today. That, I think, was the main reason that you saw that decrease in total payroll. So it wasn't just the fact that individual salaries didn't increase, it's that the total headcount actually went down by about 30% from 1,400 down to about 1,100. So, Mr. Newton, is that, that sort of is the cause. We can go back and talk about what the effect of that is.
That's what I'm wondering.
Now, the effect. So let's go back to page, okay, was that 20 now? 23, I'm sorry. Yes, 22. So now, this is one of these things, and again, this is, we've had a lot of practice answering this question. What happens when payroll goes down in a pension system? What happens to the financing and the funding and the cost of the plan? And it's, there's more than one thing, and they move in different directions. The first thing that happens is, if one of the reasons that payroll has gone down is that individual salaries did not increase as high as assumed, that actually causes a gain. That actually makes the plan less expensive. And you can see why. If one year, we're assuming an individual's pay is going to go up 4% a year for their whole career, and next year, let's say their pay is flat. So now, next year, when we project out to retirement, it's going to be 4% smaller than we thought it was going to be, because we assumed it would go up 4% a year, and now we've got a zero in there. That makes all the numbers smaller, all the active numbers smaller. And that produced the gain that we saw when we looked at the reconciliation of the unfunded. So the first thing that happens, if individual payroll grows slower than assumed, that actually increases the funded status and reduces the cost of the plan. The second thing happens though, is when we take the unfunded liability and we amortize it, over, under your amortization policy, there are different layers, but on the, more or less, it's an 18-year amortization period. That's a little bit, there's more in it than just that. But what we do is, unlike the bank where, when you amortize or pay off your mortgage, it's the same number of dollars every year, common practice for these kind of plans, for public sector plans, is to assume that your mortgage payments are going to go up with payroll. So we actually assume that payroll is going to go up 4% a year, which means that you're going to be collecting a little bit more in each future year, because you're going to apply the rate to a bigger payroll. What happens if payroll doesn't go up? Well, if you have an unfunded rate of, say, 10%, and you thought it was going to be collected on a pay that was 4% bigger than last year, and pay doesn't go up, or pay even goes down, in that case, you're going to collect less than you thought you were going to collect, which means you're going to underfund the unfunded liability, and that's another source of loss. So then what happened during the years 2009, 10, 11, and 12, is we had what are called contribution losses, meaning that you were planning to collect a certain amount, you actually collected less, because you took the percentage and applied it to a smaller payroll than you thought you were going to get, because it did not increase. So one of the things that this board did, and we'll see this in our slides when we talk about actions that have been taken, this board actually modified their funding policy to address this very particular issue. So under your funding policy, instead of simply taking the unfunded liability payment percentage, the contribution rate, to fund the unfunded, instead of just applying that to whatever payroll is, and if payroll's down, well, too bad, you get a smaller than you expected, this board actually says the unfunded liability payment will be the greater of the rate applied to payroll, or the dollar amount of unfunded liability payment that started the calculation. And that's to address exactly this issue, so that even if payroll goes down, you're still going to collect the full amount that you planned to collect that year. Not done yet. That's two of the three things. So we've had one, in terms of funding, good thing. That is, you have a gain because you're projecting smaller benefits. We also have a short-term loss, because you didn't collect as much as you thought you were going to collect, but that has been addressed by the board's funding policy. And the last one is, when you go to set the unfunded rate for next year, if pay did not go up as high as assumed, you're now going to be taking that unfunded liability payment and spreading it over a smaller payroll than you thought it was going to be, and that's going to make the rate go up. The dollars don't go up, but it makes the rate go up. So the three things that happen, you ask a hard question. So the three things that happen when pay either doesn't grow or actually shrinks, is you save money on the liability, you lose money in the short term, except that you've addressed that in your funding policy. But you also, it makes the payments look bigger going forward as a percentage of payroll, because you're taking that mortgage payment and dividing it by a smaller payroll. Just the same as if you took your home mortgage, and the home mortgage didn't change, but if you changed jobs and now have a, when you took a job with a lower salary, well, your mortgage doesn't cost more in dollars, but it's going to look like it costs more because it's going to be a bigger percentage of your salary. That's the third effect that comes in here. Now, Mr. Newton, somewhere in there, did I answer any part of your question? Thank you.
Mr. Zachaliz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Angelo and Mr. Young for coming today. Since you're giving a very good history lesson here, and for the benefit of the public, why don't, and this is a related question, why don't you just spend a few minutes discussing how the total unfunded pension liability used to be amortized over a 30-year decreasing period before July of 2012? And since that time, we now report it in, we amortize it in layers, in separate decreasing 18-year periods, why we made that policy change? And whether it's, it makes it more difficult for the light person to grasp the totality of the unfunded liability?
Now, we do have in our, in our slides, we're going to talk about how that happened. In fact, we'll probably get to that pretty soon. But before we leave the report, we will, I'm going to show you the schedule where we have the layers. So we're a little out of order. We have a slide that talks about the policy decision. The board did a very thorough review of its funding policies, and one of the things they did was they changed the way that the unfunded is paid off. Andy, what page is that?
It's on page 44.
On page 44, that must be in section three. And by the way, this is absolutely model practice. The thing about paying off a pension liability is, you know, we use an analogy to, to a mortgage. But it's actually, this is where the analogy breaks down. Unless you had a mortgage where every year, you added a new room to your house and went out and got a new little mortgage just to pay off that room. And then some years, this is where the analogy really breaks down. Some years, you actually tear down a room to your house, and you go and the bank cancels the mortgage on that. So that, banks don't do that. What happens with the unfunded liability is that every year, in addition to having whatever the unfunded was last year, that you sort of, that you sort of carry forward, you know, minus any new payments that were made on it, in addition to last year's unfunded liability, in each valuation, we identify a new unfunded that was, that was, that was identified in the new valuation. This can come from exactly three things. The first one is that every year, we compare what actually happened to the plan with the plan's assumptions. And this determines something called a gain or loss. This is actually fairly easy to do. We can say, if all the assumptions came true, given what the unfunded was last year, here's what it is this year. Here's what it would be this year. And then we compare that to what it really is this year. The difference is a gain or a loss. That's a new piece of unfunded liability. Under the old policy, that would just have been added in to last year's unfunded, and that amortization period would get shorter and shorter. It'd be the same as if you had a, originally a 30-year mortgage, now there's 25 years left, next year 24, next year 23. But every year, the new mortgage just gets added in to that same declining period. Eventually, you're going to get to where there's only five years left, four years left, three years left, and all these new unfundeds are going to be paid off over an unreasonably short period. So what the board did was to say, let's identify the unfunded as of 2012. So you'll see on this chart, and I'm going to look at the, at the bottom part here where it says combined. Okay? As of December 30th, sorry, June 30th, 2012, you'll see where it says the initial amount. This plan had $126 million in unfunded liability. Okay? And that was being paid off over a 30-year schedule. That 30 years was actually set back in 2009, which was, as of 2012, was three years ago, so there were 27 years left. Okay? Well, that chunk of unfunded, that $126 million, is still being paid off over that same originally 30, now it's, it was 27. You can see the years remaining in this 2015 valuation. Well, it's three years later, now it's 24. So that piece of unfunded liability that was known back in 2012 is being paid off over a fixed and declining period. So if someone says, when is your unfunded going to get paid off? You can say, well, this part right here is going to get paid off in 24 years. We can tell you what the remaining balance is today, $131 million, $132 million. And we can tell you what the current payment is, about $8 million. However, since then, each year, when we do the valuation, so let's look, for example, the very next line, when we did the 2013 valuation, we compared the actual unfunded at that point to what the unfunded would have been from the previous year, if all the assumptions came true, took that difference, you actually had a loss of about $3 million. That $3 million was first identified in 2013, and the board adopted an amortization period of 18 years for each of these new pieces of unfunded. So that particular chunk of unfunded, there's now $3,002,4, there's 16 years left, and that payment, the current payment is $248,000. So at this point, it's sort of like reading the rings on a tree. You can tell, starting in 2012, where each dollar of unfunded came from, how much it was when it was first identified, what caused it. Was it a gain or loss, or was it an assumption change? How long it'll be paid off under your funding policy, and what the current payment is. So I actually think that there's a lot of information here that tells not only where the unfunded came from, but when it will be paid off. So going to the question, I think that if you look just at that bottom corner, you can you can get a pretty clear sense, at this point, the, the elephant in the room is still that 2012 layer. Now, by the time we get though, 24 years from now, there will be other new unfundeds that have been identified. There will be gains and losses, there will be assumption changes. But if there were, if none of that happened, if there were no new assumption changes, which doesn't happen, and no gains and losses, which doesn't happen, you can answer the question that, you know, these, this sort of, looks like maybe about four, about $3 million worth of the unfunded will be paid off over about 15 to 16 years, but the bulk of your unfunded will be paid off in a single layer and with the last payment 24 years from now. So John, how does that get to your question?
It does. Thank you. And I hope, and I hope it's comprehensible to the public as well.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay? I want to zoom out a little bit. We're kind of in the minutia, and it's hard for even a financial mind like mine sometimes to follow all the minutia in the weeds. So I want to zoom out a little bit. I got involved with this board studying it about 2008. I was asked by the supervisors to join this board, who's put on this board in 2010. And my perspective is basically from, from those timeframes. I appreciate what you've said about the things we've implemented to improve the funding of this plan. As you know, I let the charge on almost every one of those. But in zooming out, if you look at this county, and my question speaks to the actuarial science. It doesn't speak to you as individuals. It speaks to actuarial science as a science, that this county was asked to borrow in 1996 and fix a pension problem. We'd had actuaries. This board is responsible for two things. It's responsible for investments, and it's involved, and it's responsible for going to the board of supervisors and was saying, this is a sound funding policy. The board of supervisors is responsible for setting the benefits. So we take a leap of faith with the actuarial science. And in 1996, there was a pension obligation bond to fix the prior pension problem. In 2002, there was, again, went and borrowed, put it on the county's balance sheet, made the pension plan flush, fixed the pension problem at a great dominant cost to the borrowing, but the expense of that bond flotation, several million dollars. Then again, when I was on the board, I was told, it's the market this time. Don't worry, it's the market. This has been, this is a great recession. Everything's cool. When the market comes back, it's going to be perfect. Don't worry about it. So I've been watching this very carefully. The markets come back. The market came back more than any of us ever would have imagined. It's been a fantastic market. And the 63015 Actuarial Valuation Report that you're showing on the screen speaks to that market recovery. It hadn't left us at that time, although it has now. When I zoom out, how am I supposed to accept when I go to the county, when I go to the constituents, when I go to the beneficiaries of this plan, when I go to the users of services in this county and say, trust these guys, they're telling us the truth?
Well, there were a series of statements made there, and obviously, we were not there when those were made. It's hard for me to imagine an actuary saying that everything is okay. Just so you know. So that may be a fairly high-level paraphrase of what you thought you heard, but I certainly have never, in the face of the 2008 downturn, we did, we did 15 different studies in 2009 on how to manage what amounted to 1/5 of the assets disappearing in a single year. We had negative 22% return on most of our funds. We never, ever in our lives said that it was going to be okay. What we said was, this is an extraordinary event, one which is not anticipated, but we have tools in place to manage that that can let you know how that financial impact will hit. So those were the sort of studies that we did.
It has continued to get worse. Our county's bankrupt, technically.
Okay. So, and then, and this, again, the issue of trusting the numbers. I mean, the, the calculators that we do, they do seem somewhat arcane, but when you break them into individual pieces, we believe that they are accessible and understandable to the retirement board. I think when we went through the review of funding policy with the retirement board, I got a sense that the board knew exactly what decisions they were making and were able to take ownership of that. So when it comes to not trusting the numbers, I mean, if it's a matter of not trusting the arithmetic of the calculations, you can, you can test that with an actuarial audit. If it's a matter of not trusting the actuarial assumptions, I think there, you look separately at the demographic assumptions and the economic assumptions. On the demographic assumptions, the elephant in the room is mortality. We have been notifying boards that people are living longer each year, and we keep trying to put margins into the mortality table and people continue to live longer. So we are continuing to bring to the board ways to anticipate that particular source of slippage, that particular source of future losses, and you will hear about that in your next experience study. That leaves the one that everybody likes to talk about, which is the expected return. As you, like every system in California, and like many systems around the country, California tends to be ahead of the curve when it comes to this kind of actuarial practice. You have seen the expected return go lower. It used to be every system in California was between 8 to 8.25%. This is maybe around 10 years ago. Five years ago, they were all between 7, 3/4, and 8%. A few years ago, it was, that range had moved to 7.5 to 7.75. Now, there are no systems in California, to our knowledge, that are still at 7.75. So the new range is 7.25 to 7.5. There's been a wholesale reevaluation of those expected returns. You can always say, well, then that means that you were wrong before, and we should have been using those higher assumptions all the way along. You know, 2020 hindsight is always great when you're looking backwards. I think that, so I guess I'd have to ask you to elaborate, not necessarily here, on...
I'd love to elaborate.
Yeah, what, what...
I'm very well prepared to elaborate, if the board would like me to.
But as far as, as far as, you know, when you say that, how should we trust the numbers? You know, the, I mean, if it's the arithmetic of the calculations, I think that we've done actuarial audits, and those are sound. As far as the judgment in the level cost model, I think that it is, it's actually performing exactly as it's designed to perform. But what it can't do is anticipate something like the 2008 downturn. The other thing to remember, and this is a piece of arithmetic that always sneaks up on us, is that if you have a 20% reduction in assets, it takes a 33% increase to get back where you started. So even though the returns may seem to have recovered, remember, you lost money on a high number, and you recovered the money on a smaller number. And that's one of the reasons that even, that's one of the reasons that the cumulative assets do not seem to have recovered as well as the rates of return might appear to indicate. Mr. Chairman, at some point, at, at your discretion, we could move from the report to the slides that drill down on the unfunded liability, but I'm, I'm happy to do that, you know, whenever you think it's appropriate based upon the remaining questions and discussion.
I think we're ready to go.
Ready to go? Okay. Okay. So, so this slide deck, again, this is very, just a short one. We were asked to put together a quick review of the Unfunded Actuarial Liability, UAAAL, for this presentation. And, you know, you know, part of me at this point, I am a big fan of the layered amortization because it does let you see where things came from. Unfortunately for us, it only takes us back to 2012. We actually have at least one system that's been doing the layered amortization for a long time, and we've got, it's a big spreadsheet now, but you can actually go back, you know, 20 years and see how they went through the tech bubble downturn, how they went through the housing crisis downturn, all their assumption changes as we've gone through. So we went through this terminology slide real quick here. Now, this is a short history, only since 2010, only since 2010 of Mendocino Sarah's unfunded liability. And this was, I think that one of the public comment folks made the observation that if you go back to 2010, it was only, only $100 million, and we are now seeing an 80% increase. It's now at $182 million. What you can see here is two of the, well, first of all, because of what's called five-year smoothing, and because this unfunded liability is measured on this smooth basis, not on a market basis, and we'll make a little parenthetical comment. In the actuarial report, you will always see these funded ratios done on both the market basis, which is the snapshot, and also the actuarial basis, which is the five-year smoothing. So both those numbers are always published, always included in the report. But the contribution rates, the numbers that actually go into the county's budget each year, the contribution rates are based upon the smooth assets. That's why we've shown that here. So part of what you see, you know, given that the downturn was in 2000, there was, there was a downturn in 8-9, and then the large downturn was in 9-10, which means that in the 2010, 11, 12, 13, and 14 valuations, you would see 1/5 of that huge loss that occurred in 8-9. So that's one reason why you see a steady increase. It's really what happened in 8-9 that's coming into the unfunded liability in five pieces. So that's one reason why you see a gradual increase in the five years that followed to 8-9. The other two large changes here, and these were alluded to, it was mentioned that in 2011, this was in the chair's opening remarks, 2011, there was an assumption change that lowered the expected return from 8% to 7.75. There were also other demographic assumption changes. Well, that's what's shown right here. The reason for the bump from 100 up to 125, you can see footnote, that 24 million of that increase, 24 million of that increase was due to changes in assumptions and procedures that were recommended to the board and adopted by the board. So that's the first place. I refer to this as a remeasurement of the actuarial liability. And this goes somewhat to Mr. Stevens' observations. You know, actuaries, not only do we revise the measures of the liability every year where the gains and losses come in, but here in California, every three years, we do a detailed review of every single actuarial assumption and come to the retirement board with a whole series of graphs that says, you know, here's your current assumption, here's what happened the last three years, and here's a new recommended assumption. So we are constantly revising these estimates. The revisions of those estimates on two counts, expected return on assets and mortality, all seem to go in the same direction. Some of the other revisions tend to go up and down. Salary increases, sometimes we'll revise, you know, move to a slightly higher assumption, sometimes slightly lower. Turnover assumptions, sometimes higher, sometimes lower. But mortality only goes in one direction. That's our, that's our recent experience. People are living longer, not shorter. An investment return assumption only goes in one direction. The markets appear to be becoming less generous, not more generous. So because of that, there's a clear trend on every one of our cases. Every time we do a review of assumptions, there may be some that go up and down, but there's the two big ones that always go in a higher cost direction. Well, we see that on here twice. We see it in footnote one, where in 2011, because of the economic change and other changes, $24 million increase. Then, in 2014, remember the, there was a substantial change in the expected return on assets. You went from 7.75 to 7.25. Basically, twice as big a change as you saw in 2011. It's not a coincidence that the change shown here in the footnote, see, it says 50.2, which is roughly double what it was in 2011. So this is really, and this is where, in our last slide, we'll talk about a policy paradox. You know, I think systems want to use realistic assumptions. Retirement boards want to use realistic assumptions. It is a difficult political challenge to adopt assumptions that they know are going to increase the cost of the plan, and yet that's what we see boards do over and over again. The other thing, though...
I have a question. Excuse me? I have a question. I can ask a question. I'd have to get the chair's approval. Are you ready for questions?
Can I just give, let me throw one more point in. The other thing that boards like to do, a policy likes to do, is to see the unfunded liability go down. And those two things work in the opposite direction. That is, the very same action, which we think is prudent and responsible, namely, going to a more conservative expected return on assets, which actually then leads to higher contributions, that very same action makes the plan look worse funded because the liability is now going to be larger and the funded ratio is going to be smaller. That's one reason why we think it is important to look at these kind of trends and see that, you know, to some extent, you sort of can't win. That is, if you make the responsible policy decision to go to more conservative assumptions, then you get beat up on the other side by saying, well, but your unfunded liability went up. The increase in unfunded liability is the immediate consequence of going to more prudent actuarial assumptions. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens? Are you saying that those smooth numbers up there are not representative of what the true valuation should have been on a market value basis?
Well, I will agree that, again, those are all very loaded words. I don't agree with your characterization that this is untrue. There is a snapshot measure on a market value basis, which is in our actuarial report. Those are not the numbers shown here. That is what I said. I think they're probably pretty accurate for that time period as a student of the market.
So my next question would be, if we go slow reducing a target rate of return, does the sponsor, the employer, the county end up paying more or less?
If ultimately, the plan is going to eventually get to a lower expected rate of return...
If you can't support the rate, we go slow so we don't have the shock factor, which is what we've done, does the county pay more or less?
Well, here again, your description of the process is not...
In a vacuum, we only have the target rate of return. We went slow, we should have gone lower, we decided to go slow, clearly what this board did. I did go that way, it was what the board did. Does the county pay more or less is the only question. Easy answer.
Well, but it's unfairly characterized, so I will answer it in an accurate way. That is, given two scenarios, where if eventually the plan is going to get to a lower expected return, and under one path, they make a series of decisions to get there, and the other, they do it all in one step earlier on, there will be higher contributions collected earlier if they go in one step, which means that they will actually save, they will actually have a lower cash flow cost because they're paying more money now. So they will save the investment.
Even a bigger part of that, if you go slow, the employee isn't paying their share. So the county, by necessarily, by the way, the plan's rate, must pick up that in the unfunded liability. If you went to the correct rate, the employee would pay their fair share. The company, the, the sponsor, the county would never be responsible for that. Am I correct in that?
Again, when you use term like the correct rate, I can't answer, honestly. So I'll have to withdraw.
So my next question is, so when we went to a 7.25% target rate, we could not justify, that is a, that is a net rate on our return. We look, so that's a net, that's a net rate after investment expense, after administration expense for the county. Administration expense is based on the actuarial liability. We couldn't justify it then going forward for 10 years. We couldn't have, we couldn't justify it going backwards for 17 years. It was at least 50, probably 75 basis points over. Right now, today, Callan came in and told us we should expect this is a gross investment rate of return. After you take out your administration expense and investment expense, you're going to deduct 25 to 50 basis points, a quarter, 50%. They told us our gross rate of return expectation with our target rate of assets was 6.58%. Their last published report for our 10-year average was 6.2. Callan finds the long-term rate of return is 10 years. They said that to us today. So I have a really hard time with the way, our role here on this board is managing this, this pension problem. We have a problem. I use quite frequently now, I was here for about five years before I used the term, I use it now. It's a disaster. In my, when I do my analysis, and I have pretty extensive financial background, I don't see how we can be able to pay benefits don't see how we can be able to pay benefits, we promised to our participants. We have this kind of rate discrepancy, and this board lacks the courage to address it. It's increasing the cost for the county. And I rest my case, we're bankrupt. We're technically insolvent, we're technically bankrupt. It happened 100 percent by the funding policy of this board. I think it's a time to really roll up our sleeves and address this problem. I don't think we can, if you, what's the definition of insanity, continuing this, doing the exact same thing and expecting a different result? This, what I've heard today, and what I've heard in the last, not today's retirement board meeting, but the one where I didn't vote for it, but the rest of the board did, is insanity. It's, we're digging a hole, and rather than stop digging, we're continuing to dig. This has already created, I'm going to say it again, an insolvent, bankrupt county. We're continuing to do the exact same thing that created that situation. If I, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Go on. Very well. So as far as the, you know, we wanted to start with a snapshot of the recent events, and this really does emphasize that of the increase in unfunded from the 90 to the 180, you know, a portion of it is the five-year recognition of the losses in eight-nine, but also about 75 million of it is because of this revision of estimates through the changes in assumptions. And we do have another review of the actuarial assumptions that showed up in 2017. We do that every three years in accordance with the 37 Act statute. There were some contributions, there were some comments on things that the MCR board has taken related to funding the unfunded. The, oop, I missed a slide I did, okay. The main one was this revision of amortization periods. Now, again, we do get asked pretty frequently, you know, what can we do to make the unfunded go down? And unfortunately, the only real act that a board or sponsor can do to make the unfunded go down is to put in more money. I mean, it's something of a truism, but, you know, going to more risky assets in order to hopefully, you know, get a higher investment return, you know, has risk that comes on to it. If you change benefits, the benefit changes tend to be for future hires, which does not affect your liability to date. So really, the way that you make the unfunded go down faster is to put more money in. There's no actuarial silver bullet to this. So we had a discussion with the board. Now, remember, prior to, prior to this review in 2000, the discussion was actually in 2013. But prior to that, the last time you reviewed your funding policy was in 2009. You were, you were reeling from the, from the market downturn, and you took your entire unfunded, this is, this is before our being retained by the board, but you took your entire unfunded liability at the time and amortized it over a new 30-year period. And the idea was that even with asset smoothing, each of the, each next one-fifth of that big loss, when it showed up, was going to be included in that same layer. So it'd be 29, 28, 27 years. So that was the policy you had in effect when we were asked to work with the board to review the policy. Consistent with, there's actually model guidelines on this stuff published by a group called the California Actuar Advisory Panel. That's where this idea of the layered amortization came in. And this is where we had a very intense discussion with you as a board, and some of you there will remember this, and it was two different policy questions. The first policy question, which is in some ways easier, is going to the layered approach. And for any future new unfundeds, what will the amortization period be? We walked the board through something called negative amortization, and we had slides to illustrate it, and we told the board, excuse me, that in order to avoid negative amortization, you need an amortization period that is 18 years or shorter. So the board, and we also said, told them that the model range for future layers as far as amortization period was a 15-to-20-year range, with maybe 25 years for assumption changes. This was all developed in a 28-page document that we put together for the board. So based on that, the board adopted an 18-year amortization period for all future changes in unfunded, and that's what you saw on that schedule in the back of the actuarial report. Okay, so that's future unfundeds. That doesn't change how fast you pay off the current unfunded, because it's only about unfundeds that haven't been identified yet. Then came the key policy discussion for the existing unfunded in 2012. And Andy, we had the, what was that number?
That was the 120...
126, 127 million dollar unfunded as of July 1, 2012. The board was presented with policy alternatives. The first was to leave it alone and let it continue to be paid down under that, what was then a 27-year period. That is, just continue the 30-year schedule for that single existing layer of unfunded. We also told the board that if they wanted to, they could shorten the amortization period for that layer of unfunded. And I believe we showed the board, if you shorten it from 27 to 20, or to some other shorter number, this will be the immediate short, cost impact on the board. If you think about it, if you have a 27-year mortgage and you refinance over 15 years, your current payments will go up. And so after a great deal of discussion, the board elected not to change the amortization period for that existing layer of unfunded. And so in effect, if you wanted to accelerate your path toward 100% funding, the way to do it is to shorten that layer, but it's an ultimate no-free-lunch rule, and it would have produced a dramatic increase in contribution requirements to the employer. And the board, in the exercise of their fiduciary judgment, chose to leave that layer where it was. So that was the big discussion. And by the way, that is still the case. Anytime the board wants to accelerate the path toward unfunding, remember, we just said that, you know, all the new layers are going to get paid off in about 18 years, but the entire unfunded, that large piece of 120, it's 132 million now, will not be paid off until the end of 24 years. Anytime you want to change that 24-year number, the board, that is, retirement board wants to change that to some shorter period, all they need to do is change the amortization period for that 2012 layer. We can show exactly what the additional cost will be, and then that will get you to 100% funding faster, but it will happen very commonsensically by simply having larger payments from the employer, from the county. So I dwell on that because this was a very carefully considered decision by the board, in my opinion, as the one who sort of took them through the discussion. And so the alternative to get to 100% funding faster, I think, was understood by the board, and the board decided instead to apply the shorter periods to future unfundeds, but to leave the current unfunded as of 2012 on that 27-year schedule. I don't know if there's any thoughts or comments or reaction on that. That was my recollection of the discussion. Andy, is that consistent with yours? So that's what this slide is about. This talks about that sort of restructuring of the fund. I do think this idea of paying the unfunded off in layers, there is actually a transparency to it that I think is unequaled. The thing about doing it in a single layer, having it shorter, eventually, sometime in the future, you're going to have to reset it. You're going to have to restart that amortization, because you can't put the new unfundeds in a shorter and shorter period. As we told the board at the time, that is not a stable policy. The thing about this layered approach, it can run forever. You don't ever have to really mess with it, because it's self-correcting over time. Whereas a single layer, as I say, is an unstable policy, which means you may think, well, we're going to pay our unfunded off, you know, over a fixed 30-year period, but you're not. Because 20 years from now, when there's only 10 years left, and you've got new unfundeds coming in, you're going to have to do something. You either go to layers, or you restart that whole unfunded, which means now you're basically refinancing the old debt over a longer period. Whereas under this approach, you never have to do that. So I'm a big fan of this, and I think the board bought into it, too. Okay? The other things, I mentioned this one already, the minimum contribution amount for the unfunded. When payrolls were not going up as fast as assumed, we had what were called contribution losses, because you didn't collect as much as you thought you were going to. The board fixed that by now. There's actually, it's a greater of. You either pay the dollar amount of unfunded payment, a mortgage payment, or you pay with the dollars that result from taking the rate and applying it to actual salary. So that was adopted, you have a date there, yeah, adopted in 2013. Then the other one the board also did in, later in 2013, there's this lag between when we do the valuation and when the rate's going to affect, a 12-month lag. And, and so if the rates are going up, which they were doing after 2009 because of the big market loss, it was broken into four, five pieces, so you had five years of rate increases. Well, every year, there'd be this one year where the old rate continued to be paid, and then the next year, our, our valuation would say, well, we thought the new rate was going to go into effect magically on the valuation date. It actually went into effect a year later, so you missed the increase. And then that would not get paid off until the next valuation. We now bake that into each year's costs. And we only know of three systems in California that do this, I think Kern and Orange County are the two. Calpers also has a means for doing this. These were, these are relatively, candidly, these are relatively small numbers, certainly compared to the changes that come when you, when you revalue your, when you rechange your assumptions. But these were all attempts to sort of control what I sometimes call liability bleeding, small sources of additional unfunded. And so the board has taken those two actions to try to control those, those events that will sort of gradually add to the unfunded liability.
I have another question for our first. Mr. Zachwitz is first up. Mr. Zachwitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Angela, that's exactly where I was going with my question on these 18-year layers that this board, the retirement board, really made a very concerted effort, very serious effort for transparency, that these, these layers really offer a layer of transparency that wasn't available before. As Mr. Angela pointed out, it's like looking at the rings of a tree, a cross-section of a tree. You can look, you have to keep in mind that pension costs are a moving landscape, whether we're talking about new mortality tables, whether we're talking about new Gatsby recording requirements, whether we're talking about managing risk. Every year is different. Every year has different costs, pension costs associated with it. This is a way of offering a new level, layer of transparency, a new level of transparency to the public. Do you agree, Mr. Angela?
Absolutely. I wasn't sure which way you were going, so I'm glad to hear that.
Jerry Schattmeyer?
Hi, can you hear me? I just saw the big short, so this may be a totally loaded question, but I think everybody is aware that the county did get their fit rating in December. They said that the outlook was stable. The implied general obligation at an A-plus. They're looking at this data. We don't, they ask us questions, very few questions about retirement. They basically look at the actuarial report from front to back, and they look at all this. Are they that wrong? When we're being told we're bankrupt, are they that wrong? I have a hard time...
Are you asking me? I do have to answer for that.
Well, I just, I'm just directing that to you because you basically said we're bankrupt, and are they that wrong?
I think they said our ability to pay our current bills are in better shape because of the great discipline of the board. But I have to ask you as treasurer, being on a long-term member on this board, don't you lay awake at night knowing one-third of the total county receipts for taxes? One-third of the total county receipt for taxes go to pay this pension expense every year? It's unbelievable in my life. And this county per dollar payroll, I manage retirement plans for regular, for profit companies. If I tell one of my clients that this county pays 50 cents per payroll dollar, and we pay social security, too, and we pay deferred comp for managers, but we pay for pension cost alone when we add the pension obligation debt, which we should, we pay 50 cents per dollar in payroll, everybody, every one of my clients would be out of business. Maybe we are, too, we're bankrupt now. But I do have a question for our actuaries, if I can, if I can ask.
So as far as me laying awake, I laid awake more, probably five years ago, when we were dealing with teeter-totter debt and a $16 million debt balance in our, in our fund. I have, I do not disagree at all that we have major problems. I totally, totally agree with what everybody's saying, but I do think that there's been a lot of really good strides made the last, probably three to four years particularly, monumental strides. I look at things, I feel like I get what you're saying. I look at the fact that we have two more years, I think, of negative amortization. If I look at the...
Will you show me on the actuarial report where we have...
Let me finish, okay? One thing I look at that I, I feel good about is, and like I said, I'm not saying that we don't have major problems. I don't think there's anybody here...
One third of the act's receipts.
Ted, let me talk. Okay. I don't think there's anybody here that is not saying we have major problems. I think everybody knows that. I don't think people have their head in the sand. I think people are, are, like you, they're trying to figure out how we can solve this. One thing I feel good about is we have 10 years left to pay on our pension obligation bonds. I'm not going to, you know, career, I'm definitely not going to go back and say that was a wise thing to say. I'm not going there. I wasn't here then, I'm not, I'm not going there. What I'm saying is we have 10 years left to pay on the pension obligation bonds, $64 million, $8 million a year. 10 years from now, that $8 million debt that we pay every year goes away, that is helpful. You know, it's a small piece, I get it, but when you look at 75 percent, or $75 million was added to this because we changed our assumption rate. It's not that we did anything ridiculous, we're just trying to deal with the market.
If we change our investment rate to what our investment advisors told us today, you just recreated that pension obligation balance immediately today. And that's, if you believed our investment counselors, that's what we should do. I do have questions for our actuary.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
So I would like, so the public, him supervisors can see it, I'd like you to go to the page in the actuarial evaluation report where you showed the receipt, and what I want to speak to is the amount of dollars that come in, so involve the employer and employee contributions, and the amount of dollars that go out in benefits. And the question this trustee fiduciary has is how, when we have a plan that would be, by public standards, either endangered or today with the market downturn, critical, how can we have that funding level and, and not put a single dollar for a current employer or that employee's dollars in the plan? Not only did every one of those dollars that employee pays in this county, or the sponsor pays in this county, go to benefit payroll and administration expense, but additional million dollars of out last year per month went out to pay this benefit and administration expense load. If we had 100% funding, I wouldn't be worried about it, because I understand that we have a bunch of people coming through, but when we have a somewhere between endangered and critical, a private plan would be forced to reduce benefits.
Well, first, I mean, I think what Mr. Stevens is pointing out is that your plan, like every plan eventually gets to this point, is cash flow negative. So that the amount of contributions coming in is about 20 million, right? That's 19, eight, something like that. And the benefit payments going out plus expenses is about 31 million. You know, that is, that is a state, again, that every plan gets to. I think it is a key issue for your investment managers, because they need to manage their cash flow in a way that anticipates this. But the thing is, this is also a very predictable result. The benefit payments are probably the most predictable thing in the entire operation of the plan. And the, and the contributions, again, except that, you know, they tend to go up and down, but they only tend to go up, really. And so I think as long as your investment managers are managing your portfolio in a way that's consistent with these cash flows, this is simply not an issue.
New question. Supervisor McCallum?
Well, and I forgot to bring my chair over with me, but it's more a statement than a question. And one thing that I want to say, and it, I believe, does tie in with the statement you just made, under current conditions, and even if the assumed rate of return is overstated, and it really should be 6.75 or 6.5 or 6, with all else remaining the same, does anyone in this room, well, I'll make the statement, there is no one in this room drawing a pension from the county of Mendocino who needs to worry that you are not going to continue to be paid your pension in full for your life. And so is that a true statement?
Will the roads be fixed?
Please, sir, you're out of order. You are out of order.
And you're stupid.
And the gentleman who is speaking from the audience recommended that the county declare bankruptcy in 2009. He recommends the county declare bankruptcy today. The county is not bankrupt, it's not in danger of going bankrupt. This board will not vote to declare bankruptcy. That's all they're responsible. So what I'd like to say, and I'll try and make it briefly, but I noticed some people are leaving. I don't want people to leave.
I don't want people to leave hearing only one side of the story. With very few exceptions, the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Retirement, for the last seven years, has made every responsible decision they can to safeguard the pension investment. And yet, there is a large unfunded liability. There's some of the things that have been done. There is no longer any diversion of excess earnings. The amortization has been, of the unfunded liability has been reset, so that all future unfunded liability is layered over 18 years. That means there will never be negative amortization going forward. There's been numerous changes in policies. There's been a new investment counselor, a new actuary. And another thing I'd like to say, the situation in Mendocino County is by no means unique. Public sector pension systems across the nation are facing very similar problems. And in fact, Mendocino County is probably somewhere in the middle of the pack in terms of where we stand in relation to others. So there are problems. Many of them are actually systemic in the system, and the fix isn't here in Mendocino County with these two boards. The fix, if there is one, is in the state legislature or in the courts. So my main theme is, no one here drawing a pension need worry about the security of your pension going forward. Thank you.
Okay. So there was, one of the things we're heading toward is what are possible actions, additional actions that can't be taken. We put here on this slide other unfunded liability-related actions that have been taken by other California public entities. Let's start with the pension obligation bonds. Pension obligation bonds, you know, have always been, at base, a leveraged play. The idea is that if the fund is, assuming it's going to earn 7.5%, I just picked that because it's easy to say, 7.5% or 7.25%, and an employer can borrow money at a lower rate, then by putting it into the fund, they're hoping to earn that higher amount, and also, quite frankly, because it reduces their unfunded, then they reduce their interest costs, which is also calculated at that amount. Of course, that all assumes that you really are going to earn that higher rate. Well, that higher rate is a risky rate, which is why it's higher. And so there was a mention earlier, the GFOA, they're the ones that certify your CAFR, so you get a little plaque on your wall. They also issue what are called advisories and best practices. Best practices tend to be where GFOA is giving you suggestions on what you should do. Advisories are where they give you suggestions on what you shouldn't do. That's actually the way they characterize them. And they're, they had, it had in place for some time an advisory on pension obligation bonds that urged great caution. That advisory was amended in January of 2015, and now the GFOA, and again, they're just a bunch of guys, but the GFOA recommends against the issuance of pension obligation bonds because of the risks involved. Now, actuaries have always had sort of a mixed relationship to pension obligation bonds. If anything, we've been, if concerned about anything, you know, the folks who are, tend to promote pension obligation bonds tend to be from the fixed income market, you know, it's what they do for a living. We'd like to always have seen perhaps some more risk analysis of, you know, what happens if the market goes down by 20% in two years? And how does that look before you issue the POBs? And how does it look after you issue the POBs? What POBs will do effectively is to increase your distribution of total cost. It basically increases your risk. I've also seen presentations by POB folks, and they show time going this way, your market cycles that tend to be kind of a sawtooth curve. They're not really like sine waves, they tend to go up and then drop. And they said, well, all you have to do with pension obligation bonds is issue them right here. You know, that is if you issue, it's really a matter of market timing. But this speaker was saying that that can be done. And so he was putting forth a service that would tell you when was the appropriate time to issue pension obligation bond. Okay. I think that, so our only, our only note on that is, is that it is not a free lunch from a risk standpoint. And that the risk, the possible risks involved, with the leverage involved in pension obligation bonds, needs to be analyzed carefully there. But that's the one way that you get a quick reduction in your unfunded liability in the pension plan. But as also speakers have noted, and they're absolutely right, you need to look at the unfunded liability together with the remaining bonded debt under POBs to really see what the county's indebtedness is as far as pension obligation bonds. I think that reporting has also improved in recent years. The other thing, I mentioned this, that, excuse me, if you go to shorter amortization periods, especially for that 2000, that original 2012 layer, that will reduce your unfunded. It will do so at a dollar-for-dollar cost. But Mr. Stevens did make a good point. The dollars that you put in, even though it may be a burden on the budgets today, you know, that reduces the interest that accrues under the retirement system at 7.25%. So as far as just the dollars, you will pay fewer dollars if you put more money in now, but then that also gets into the opportunity cost of those dollars, which I'll talk about in my last slide. And the other one is, you can go to more conservative assumptions that doesn't really make your unfunded go down, it actually makes it go up, but it does increase the cash flow into the plan because it results in a higher contribution rate. The other thing that we've, I won't go through this in detail, there was, new benefits were adopted. Now, the point was made here that in this county, there were actually pension reform tiers that were adopted prior to PAPRA, and then PAPRA came along with their own version. This is just a quick summary of what they are. What they do, though, remember the cost is two pieces, the normal cost and the payoff the unfunded. Putting in a new tier lowers the normal cost for future hires. That's, that's all it does, but that's a real thing, especially in a system where, as we heard today, about one-third of your active members are already in the new tier. Well, for those one-third of active members, we put in here what the difference is in normal cost between the new tiers and the old tiers, and it is appreciable. For safety tier two, it's the largest one, is almost a 10% of pay difference between the old normal cost and the new normal cost. For probation tier, 7.6. And for the generals, which is tier two, three, that's because you had that new tier, you put it on your own, about 3.6%. Again, does not reduce your unfunded liability, but it does reduce your future normal cost, which in theory would, could then free up resources to make, to go toward the unfunded, or just generally reduce the overall pressure of the retirement cost on the county's budgets. Member contribution rates, you have this for new tiers. Under PAPRA, it's required that the member contribution rate is simply 50% of the normal cost, period. The employee rates can be increased above if you negotiate it, and then you have this issue where for the legacy tiers, Andy maybe can help you, you know, what our status is there. Some of the systems have been asking us about, there's a feature in the law that says in collective bargaining in 2018, the employers can impose a 50-50 normal cost split on the legacy tiers. We have seen a number of employers start to ask for those numbers so that they can basically use them in collective bargaining leading up to 2018.
Yeah, that question has not been raised yet at Mendocino County, but like Paul has indicated, that question is only triggered in right now. I think all of the trial systems that we work on, only two or three have started to ask this question.
Right. So then again, that will not reduce your unfunded liability, but what it does do, in fact, it takes that normal cost and re, and changes the split in the normal cost between the members and the employers, either getting to that 50-50 point or potentially going above the 50-50 point. But again, prior to 2018, that's all a bargaining issue, and even 2018, you know, imposing something is still a bargaining issue. So we don't want to, we don't want to give the impression that that somehow that can be done, you know, easily or readily or in a cavalier fashion. But that is also an option that's out there to consider.
Question. Those discussions about the 50-50 for classics in 2018, is that on a cost-going-forward basis? Like in 2018, it's not retroactive, it's only for employees that continue?
It would be only going forward. Yeah, we haven't seen anyone talk about going back and capturing. It's only for, for work, it's for current employees, but for work performed in the future.
Right. So they, they basically would be two tiers and their own tier. I mean, they'd have their stuff earned and the stuff into the future that they paid different rates on, or they would have paid different rates on, correct?
I think it's would have paid. I don't think it actually creates a new tier, but going forward, the, compared to what would happen under the current division, the employers would pay a little less, some less, and the members would pay some more. On a going-forward basis.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next. Let's see. Now, here we want to talk about future changes in the unfunded that are coming up. Under asset smoothing, by the way, the asset smoothing has really been doing its job lately. You know, some years the smooth value is higher, some years it's lower. That's just the way it's supposed to work. We have digested that, is we have in the unfunded all of the big losses from eight-to-nine. That doesn't mean that they've been funded, it means, but means they are in the current rates. And now we're just, you know, we had good years in, a bad year in '12, good years in '13, '14. A year in '15 was not a good year. A year in '16 is not looking too good so far. But again, that's the nature of the markets, the nature of asset smoothing. We do know that there are actually, as of this valuation, you were actually, had rainy day money, you actually had deferred gains. The smoothed value was actually lower than the market value, which means you calculated the employer rates based on less than all of the assets, about $11 million less. And that means that those $11 million will actually cause future costs to go down for the employer unless you have future losses. And I say this sitting here in a year where we're looking at, so far, year-to-date, pretty serious losses. So but that, so there's, there's not a lot of predictable future changes in the unfunded from asset smoothing. We will be doing an experience study prior to the June 30, 2017 valuation. There's continued downward pressure on that expected return. Let's talk about that for a second, because I know that your investment consultants were here. There's, there's always this little choreography between the investment consultant and the actuary on what looks to be the same number. I would urge you to remember that we, your actuary, do not advise you on asset allocation. That is the purview of your investment consultant. That goes the other way. Your investment consultant does not advise you on how to measure your actuarial liabilities. That's our job. Now, in order for them to do their job, which is advise you on asset allocation, they come up with their capital market assumptions, and they use them to compare different portfolios to compare expected risk and expected return. But I think it's largely true that the absolute level of an individual investment consultant's capital market assumptions don't matter as much as how they compare across different asset allocations. What does that mean? If you hired a different investment consultant, which I'm not suggesting, it is a random, it's a coin toss whether your new investment consultants' capital market assumptions would be higher or lower than your old one. We do a survey of nine different investment consulting firms every year to get their capital market assumptions, and there's easily a 200-point spread, easily. So the idea is, do you want your measure of liabilities to depend on who you hire as your investment consultant when the investment consultant's role is not related to measuring your liabilities? So they're always going to be different. One reason that your investment consultant has lower numbers in your current assumption is actually inflation. And I don't know if this was mentioned in the earlier presentation, but you know, both the investment consultants and the actuaries, when we come up with these capital market assumptions, we use a sort of a building block approach. You know, our particular actuarial model starts with price inflation, then adds real return, that's returns above inflation, and then adds an adjustment for expenses and adjustment for risk. Okay? Investment consultants sometimes do it a little bit differently. Instead of starting with price inflation, they might start with a risk-free rate, a kind of a treasury rate. Then they would add risk premiums for different asset categories, but you get this same sort of layered approach. If you look at the capital market assumptions of their investment consultant...
Back in 2014, Callon.
Callon. Look at Callon's investment cons, investment returns, sorry. Look at Callon's capital market assumptions, they are assuming price inflation of about 2.5%. 2.5%. The 7.25 assumption that was recommended to you in 2014 and that you adopted has a price inflation component of 3.25%. 3.25 compared to 2.5. That's 75 basis points, which is pretty close to the difference between Callon's 10-year forecast and the 7.25 that you were assuming for actuarial purposes. So one way of looking at this is this is a difference of opinion on what inflation will be going forward. Now, no one really knows what long-term inflation is going to be, but folks who tend to do things based on market pricing, which is what Callon folks tend to do, tend to let the market tell them what inflation will be. And market forecasts of inflation right now are very low, down around a 2% range. Does that mean that we know that long-term inflation is going to be 2%? No. Long-term inflation is unpredictable. It's unpredictable by you, by us, by Callon, and by the market. But because Callon is running, you know, market-driven, investment-driven models, they tend to use market numbers. That's why I think they tend to have lower price inflation. Real point here is that when Callon comes in and does their illustrations, and I believe they'd agree with me, they are not saying that you should lower your expected return for actuarial purposes, and not even necessarily predicting the future, because their job is not to predict the future, their job is to help you pick different asset allocations. So I would, I mean, I'm not saying that you should disregard the fact that you have a professional who is less optimistic in the short term than your current actuarial assumption, but that does not mean that your actual assumption is wrong. It doesn't even mean that you're really getting conflicting information. You've got two advisors who are really answering different questions, but they sound like the same answer, so it's hard to avoid comparing. But it's really, just so you know, that just the price inflation component is enough to explain, if that's the right word, the difference between Callon's 10-year forecast and your current assumption of 7.25. Now, that said, we, SEAGULS, California Public Sector Practice, you know, we customize all of our assumptions for each client, with one exception. The price inflation component of both the salary assumption and the investment return assumption, we only have one of those at any point in time, because after all, you can't really go to, you can't go to Contra Costa, it's the same question, right? It's national price inflation, right? It's the same statistic, whether I'm at Contra Costa or at Alameda, so we tend to have the same number. Starting in 2015, for new studies that we're doing, we are recommending a 3%, 3% price inflation component. So I can already tell you, when we come here in 2017, one of the assumptions, one of the components that you will see is that we will recommend that the 3.25 go down to 3. And if you do the math, if nothing else changes, if your real return is the same, that alone would move the 7.25 down to 7. So see how that works? If you've got price inflation, real return, if the price inflation component goes down by 25 basis points and nothing else changes, well, then the top number is going to come down by the same 25 basis points. So we do expect, that doesn't mean we know what the answer will be, we'll know that after we do your study, but as far as the price inflation component, that will be downward pressure on the 7.25 assumption. And you are not the only one of our clients in that situation. We have at least two other clients that are currently at 7.25 with the 3.25 price inflation. We've given them the same sort of preview of coming attractions. The other one is mortality. Mortality is continuing to improve, meaning the people are living longer. We are actually moving in the direction of something called generational mortality, where you would bake the future mortality improvement into today's costs. That has the effect of an effect taking a bunch of future changes and capitalizing them today, so it can be, it can be a big number. We have, we have looked at this for some systems, we have not yet recommended this, but it can be in the order of 2% to 4% of pay, going to the generational mortality, the effect on contribution rates. So you do have those two shocks to the system potentially coming up in your 2017 experience study. We just, you know, we don't know that it's time to start putting those into budgets yet, but those are things that we want the boards to know, that that's coming your way, and the board of supervisors as well. I think that's all we have on that slide. Anything else? Okay, let me do the last slide we got here. You know, when we hear this conversation about paying off the unfunded faster, and again, I was involved in the development of these model funding policies, and there's policy trade-offs. On the one hand, there's this sense of you want the current taxpayers to pay the costs of benefits for the current employees. This idea of sort of a demographic matching. This avoids, what's the, I'm kicking the can down the road, intergenerational equity, that is a valid policy. That is a valid policy consideration, and that tends to move in the direction of shorter everything, shorter amortization periods. But go the other way. There's also a valid policy concern of managing contribution volatility. Managing contribution volatility tends to move in the longer direction. And so there's this policy tension. You want to go shorter to sort of get it paid for. You want to go longer in order to manage volatility. And this 15 to 20-year sort of sweet spot amortization that we discussed with the board, and your 18, you notice is right in the middle of that, that's a balance between looking only at volatility management, which gets you to 30-year amortization, or looking only at demographic matching, which would get you to very short, seven, eight, 10, 12-year, much shorter amortization periods. I think one of the things to consider when people say, "We got to pay off the unfunded liability faster." If I were in a provocative mode and wanted to be a little bit glib and tongue-in-cheek, I would say, "Why?" I don't believe it is a solvency issue. The fund is not going to run out of money because you're amortizing your unfunded over 25 years instead of 10 years. That is not, that is not what that leads to. It's more of a, of a policy theory of, "We should be doing this faster." But that comes at an opportunity cost. Paying off the unfunded doesn't increase benefit security, and you do this balance. The board did go through this discussion. But I do occasionally want to ask, you know, given that paying off the unfunded faster means that those dollars are not going to be used for something else, what is the clear policy advantage of accelerating paying off the unfunded compared to whatever else you would do with those dollars? That's not an actuarial question. That's, that's a municipal finance policy question. But the idea that paying off the unfunded is always the best thing to do with your money, you'd have to talk to the people that could find something else to do with that money and have that conversation. So I do want to introduce that, that thing here. And the last one here, I've already mentioned, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. If you go to more conservative assumptions, which increases contributions, it makes the plan look worse funded. It lowers your funded ratio, it increases your unfunded liability. And then for doing the right thing, which is what we think the board does, the retirement board, when they adopt more conservative assumptions, well-judged, more conservative assumptions, then they get beat up because the unfunded keeps going up. So, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. That is, Mr. Chairman, both of you, that's our prepared remarks. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So maybe we could, uh, uh, walk out.
Yeah.
So we can open up for members of the public to ask questions on the actuarial study, and then we're going to go on to the third item, which is possible action on rescinding the excess earnings policy. So the first, first speaker card that we have here is Sue Thornhill.
Good afternoon. My name is Sue Thornhill. I'm the president of the Association of Retired Employees in Mendocino County. I also worked in the retirement department for 25 years. So I understand these issues very, very well. However, we as county employees, many of us born here, raised here, raised families here, are in business here, spent our county dollars on housing and all, all of the benefits that we are rewarded within this county. We have paid our own taxes. None of us got away without taxes, obviously. But again, this goes for the employees as well. I just feel we need to be represented. We will not apologize, apologize for having served the public for many, many years, myself almost 30, many of us 40 to 45, some of us only 10. However, we will not apologize for that, and we will not apologize for living longer. I would, I would say, um, that one is, I would say.
That's a great line.
But I, I will say that we do, we are proud to be Mendocino County retirees. And I realize public sentiment has turned many, many people against us as a whole. I will remind you, I am a business owner. I have the same issues that other members of the public have here today. So there are answers out there. I understand they are long-term, they've been coming for 50 years. So we appreciate the hard work you're doing. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to go to the microphone, now's the time. Otherwise, we're going to go to, uh, the rest.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to speak under number four, but I'm concerned that whether or not people will last. This is a pretty good turnout, I got to say, for a Tuesday afternoon. My name's Holly Mandrill. Sorry, I know how the clerks work. And I want to start by saying that I have a great deal of respect for all of you. I was at the, the joint meeting, I think it was mentioned, maybe 2011. It was a few, it was a number of years ago, was the last joint meeting of these two bodies. And I'm frustrated to say that I don't feel like we've made that much progress. Not much has changed in that, in those interview, intervening years. And, you know, back then I had said that it's not politics, but it's not politics, it's math. I really believed that, but in the interview, intervening years, you know, maybe it is politics. Maybe that's why we have been unable to come together to come up with real solutions. I appreciate the steps that have been taken to deal with the unfunded liability. Both groups were talking about the positive steps that have been taken. But one of the things that was mentioned was the no longer funding retiree healthcare. I don't see that as a win. I mean, I spoke to people that were, those were very challenging meetings. And I spoke with people who were diagnosed with cancer, right, as their, their promised healthcare benefits were being taken away, primarily because the funding investment had not been done to pay those future benefits of the past. And so with all due respect, Supervisor McCowen, I appreciate that you say employees don't need to worry, our county doesn't need to worry, it's going to be fine. But I made these comments before I got up here today, and I had said, "They're going to say everything is fine, they're going to say that we don't need to worry." But just the simple compounding, compounding interest gives me grave, grave concern. And it's led to a lack of trust in the experts and the information that we're getting. Just as a layperson, I'm not a finance expert, but I understand how compound interest works, and I cannot see how, I hate to say pushing it down the road, it's going to work. When we looked at the, the size of the unfunded pension liability, if it was a graph, it would look like this. You know, it's not, we're not meeting the challenge, and I believe that it's a silent bankruptcy, I really do, that's, that's eating away at our funding dollars. And there is many other issues that need to be funded that are not being funded because of that. And so I hope that, I'm number four, that we get to hear some of your ideas for how to, how to fix that. Thank you.
Hello, please meet, my name is Lee Fark, and I live here in Ukiah. I've been listening to all of this, I've been a long time county employee. I'm still working, so I'm still paying taxes and I'm still paying into the retirement fund. What I've heard, some of the comments, it's a lot about worry and fear. I don't think we should be afraid, I don't think we should worry. I think we should roll up our sleeves and get to work. And I think these two boards have been doing that, and I applaud that. There's some difficult decisions that have had to be made. You've made those, and I applaud you for that. However, I think there's a misconception that's been talked about in this meeting today regarding debt, as if all debt is looked at the same way. All of us really know that there's debt that has to be paid every month, and there's debt that has to be paid in a 30-year period. To say all debt is the same is obviously not true. And I think that the true level of whether or not the county is bankrupt is if it can pay its debt in the timeframes it has agreed to pay it in. So I have, as has often been used today, the example of home mortgage. I know that's not an exact example, but it's the same principle in that if I take a mortgage out for 30 years, my bank isn't expecting me to pay it off all next month. If I go to the doctor and he bills me for that appointment, he expects me to pay it off. It's all debt, but all debt is not the same. And I know most of the people around these tables understand that. And I'm a little concerned that some people are trying to lump all debt into one, as if there was not a difference. Secondly, there were some points made about how much goes to salary and pension benefits are part of your salary. I don't have to tell the people in this room that the main expense of the county is labor. Government is labor-intensive. It's about providing a service, it's about providing regulatory services. It's about people, it's about employees. Your major cost is paying salaries, and part of those salaries are benefits. So when you say a third of our money is going to a benefit, that's a very important benefit because, as most of us know, county salaries have a cap. Okay, we can, we can be hired for a job, work through our five steps, and work here for 30, 35 years and not make any more because there's a salary cap. So what on earth would someone want to come to Mendocino County and spend their lives, their careers, working for this county to know that they'll never make anything more other than whatever coldest they're going to get throughout the years? Well, part of that is because we know if we work here, we were promised a defined benefit package that included that defined pension benefit. I'm still working for the county. I want the county to recruit, retain qualified people. I have to work with these people. My job is dependent on how well they do their jobs. You need qualified people. You say there's, "We could use this money to fix the roads," or "We could use it to fix mental health resources." Well, guess what? You need to do that, you need people. You need qualified, competent people, and that's what it's going to cost you. So that's something you have to think about. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Garm McFadden, and I'm here representing my mother-in-law, who is a 30-year-plus county employee. She is working right now.
My name is Elizabeth McFadden. I worked for the county for about 30 years and continue to work now as a private contractor without benefits. I stayed on with the county during my employment because of the job securities, the reliability, the opportunities, and the retirement plan. I felt sabotaged when the county mismanaged its investments, causing my insurance programs to raise by 400% with horrible coverage, and now this. Had I expected this, I may have chosen to continue full-time employment. This is no way to treat your dedicated public servants, who now are elderly and vulnerable. So please find another way to deal with this, such as a pay cut for the top 1%. On that note, each time we had job studies, such as Sladen, the department heads got huge raises with the employees, huge raises while employees lost range within the steps and lost positions, resulting in overworked employees. This needs to stop. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Go ahead, we do have one speaker card. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Neelam Solomon, and I'm a 44-year resident in Mendocino County. I'm concerned about several things. First of all, we have made promises to people, and promises are meant to be kept. People who retire with $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, if they have a cut of 25%, which we've seen in Detroit, we've seen it in Stockton, you know, that's not right. These people don't have much money, as several of them have said. They have worked for 30 years and now they cannot recover. You know, they can't start all over again. It's immoral if they would have to take any cuts. But I don't see how we can go on the way we are. We had, because of the accounting rules now, we showed we were $80 million in the black last year. Now we are $55 million in the red. You know, we were required to do different things by the accounting standards, and suddenly we lost $135 million. In my book, if I don't have more, if I have more debts than I have money, you go into bankruptcy, unless you have a way of catching up and paying that off. I think this county might have to go into bankruptcy, and everybody will have to pay. The taxpayers will have to pay, the bondholders will have to pay. But worst of all, the retirees would have to pay, and that would not be right. You know, Sherry mentioned we have a double-A rating, and can't we trust these rating agencies? Well, these are the same rating agencies that told us Lehman was wonderful, Bear Stearns was wonderful, Goldman Sachs was wonderful, Bank of America was wonderful, and Countrywide was really wonderful. And look what happened to all of them. I don't think we can trust the rating agencies, no. What else? What I'm seeing, what Siegel is showing us, is in 2005, 2006, we had an unfunded liability of $31 million. 10 years later, it's $182 million with amortization. Now, I would like to see what happens if this doesn't grow. An amortization table of how it's going to be paid over 18 years, but there's an imputed interest, I think, of 7.25%. So it's going to grow irrespective. It's not a static number. And all we're doing is kicking the can down the road. And you know what? We'd all be dead, and the people who are working now will have to pick up the, pick up the pieces. Because they're working today thinking they've got a pension, which they won't have. And real fast, I know my time is over, but we had written a letter to the, to the county, 400 signatures, and the letter we got back was insulting. This is supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, for the people. It was not. This letter was, "Who the heck are you guys to ask us anything? We don't have time to answer your questions." So you know what? We need a little more conversation discourse and transparency over here. Because the people are quite irritated and frankly, not very trusting of people in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jared Carter. I'm a lawyer, I'm not here as a lawyer, I'm here as a citizen. I'm a taxpayer, and I live here, and my family lives here. I want to thank you for this hearing because before this hearing today, the one thing I could not stand or understand going on in our country was how the hell do 30% of the people support Donald Trump? Now I know. You've subjected us to two hours of obscure obfuscation and defensive analysis of how the hell we got $50 million, frankly. And none of it made any sense. Thank you, Ted Stevens, and thank you, John Dickerson, for pointing out just how bad our finances are. Now, guys, I want to give you a little bit different perspective. I want to start off by saying I agree with what all of these employees said. There isn't any way in the world anybody with half-sense and one eye would want to take away any benefits from anybody. There may be five or 10 employees that have abused the system that somebody may worry about, but the rest of the employees know, and they got to be solidly protected. But my perspective, I have had a, heard a word about how to accomplish the purposes of the government. The government's purposes are not to hire people and give them salaries and give them benefits. The government's purposes are to provide services to the citizens who pay the debt. to the citizens who pay the debt. Okay? Nobody talked about that. McCowen never cared. All he wants to do is protect those benefits and salaries. We care. We want the roads fixed. We want the public health service funded. We want other county services funded. We created a public employee benefit package so we would get good people who would work honestly and do those jobs. That young man who stood up here and talked about what he wanted, I agree with him 100%. But we screwed it up, guys. You individuals here today are not the people responsible, but over a lifetime, the last 20 years, we've screwed it up. Hired too many people. We paid them too much. We promised them too much. We're not figuring out how to pay our bills, and we can't. Now, you got to do something about that, and it isn't long-term making everybody suffer their services or cutting down. You've got to cut to the chase, solve the problem. My personal recommendation is you go through bond, if you're bankruptcy and you stiff the bondholders. You might sue your, end of bankruptcy, you might sue the people who have advised the county and got us in this position. They're big companies. They've got insurance. Pick up another 20 or 30 million bucks off of them and then stiff the bondholders. But if you don't want to do that, do something. This idea of stretching it out to forever, hiring these guys, paying them a big bunch of money so they'll advise you at each step, that's insanity. I think Ted Stevens said the definition or somebody did. They give a lousy advice. Hire somebody who doesn't work for any of the people with a dog in this fight to objectively analyze it. But the main point is, if you're going to go reach a fundamental solution, stop paying the bondholders. They've got no remedy but to throw you into bankruptcy. Remember, Brev Rabbit kept saying, "Don't throw me in the briar patch." They're not going to put you into bankruptcy. You want to go to bankruptcy. Stop paying the bondholders. Take that money, hire you some objective advisors, and decide upon a course of action and implement it. I think you should do that. I wrote Carrie Brown a letter a month ago and spelled out that theory, and I hope she will share it with you. I've got copies if anybody cares. I think, I'm not trolling for a job. I'm 80 years old. I don't want a job. So, but that's what you ought to do, in my opinion. Thank you.
We still have two more agenda items, which is to rescind the excess earnings policy by the county. The Board of Retirement has already done that. And then we also have our last agenda item, which is to discuss possible actions. So if we have no more public comments on this item, we will go to rescinding the excess earnings policy.
Just very briefly, if I may, since my name was specifically called out, I find it curious that Ms. Madrigal is very concerned about the unfunded liability, but she thinks it's atrocious that the county relieved itself of $130 million unfunded liability by changing our policy on retiring healthcare. Had we not done that, our unfunded obligation would be at least $130 million more, probably $150 million by now and growing. So you can't have it both ways. Secondly, to Mr. Carter, how do you propose to provide services to the people if we don't hire people and pay them? That is how services are provided by the county. Finally, I think the thing that should be obvious to everyone is there's nothing about the retirement system that is cut and dried or simple. It's all extremely complicated, interrelated. Anyone who tries to boil it down to a soundbite is misleading the public and the employees and the retirees. And what we see is an effort to balance many competing interests, the need to provide current services, the need to maintain our obligations, including to our retirees. So you go all the way one way, you're going to make it very difficult to provide services. In fact, lowering the assumed rate of return, if it were to be lowered to 6.5%, as some would like, or lower, at 6.5% would increase the unfunded liability approximately $75 million, increase current payments to the county, reduce the ability to provide service. So the simple solution isn't really a solution.
I would like us to go through the rest of our agenda right now. However, I have had a request from county staff who've been taking minutes that we take a short five-minute break, and so we'll do that right now. Okay, we're going to read it. Read it, or, read the meeting. And we're on to agenda item number three, which is discussion of possible revocation of Board Supervisors Resolution 9, 2118, related to excess earnings. As I said earlier, this similar action was already taken twice by the Board of Retirement, and now the Board of Supervisors has on its agenda a resolution to revoke a previous policy, which in the past declared allowed the declaration of excess earnings, which many of us think is sort of a misnomer, and in the past used those funds to pay for retiring healthcare. There is no retiring healthcare anymore. There is no declaration by the current board of excess earnings and this policy, adoption of this resolution would put in policy what is in fact practice by the county of Mendocino. So we have a quick staff summary from the county council.
So, thank you. Catherine Elliott, I think that you actually did the summary, but basically the resolution is looking to rescind our previous adoption of Government Code Section 315, Line 2.4, which only becomes operative in Mendocino County by the Board adopting it, which it did, I believe it was back in '98 and again in '09. So in revoking that, we no longer would be, and again, it states in here the goal is to provide long-term, stable funding of the retirement system. So in adopting this resolution, you would be revoking your previous adoption of 315,92.4, and it would no longer be operative in Mendocino County.
Do we have any Board comment on the proposed motion, proposed resolution?
I don't have a comment, Mr. Chairman, but I'd be glad to move the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Oh, a second. I'll refer to Supervisors of the House.
Supervisor McCowen, you previously served on the Board of Retirement. Do you want to comment on this?
Well, as stated by staff, there is currently no, there are no excess earnings if indeed they ever existed. By policy, excess earnings can no longer be diverted from the retirement fund until it's 100% funded. And in fact, even then, they would have to be held as a reserve against future downturns in the system. So it's only logical to revoke the resolution, which will guarantee that, not only by policy, but until some further action of the Board of Retirement, but until some further action of the Board of Supervisors, which I would not anticipate, there will be no future declaration of excess earnings. I believe that would be the effect of this resolution. So hopefully, we can put that one to bed. The damage that may have been done in the past has been done. That's a lot of our current problem. But hopefully, we will not hear people concerned about some future misuse of so-called excess earnings.
So we have a motion on the table. I doubt anyone wants to rush to the microphone and defend the excess earnings policy of the past, but in case anybody does, feel free.
Do you want to correct, do you want to correct the record for what the Board of Retirement did? It was misquoted the way our excess earnings policy is. We will never do excess earnings again, is what our policy says. It doesn't say until 100% funded.
Our policy basically says to use only, use excess earnings to reduce the unfunded liability or as a reserve against future economic downturns.
So not till 100% funded. We get away with that.
Well, but I also said, and then once it's 100% funded, any excess earnings would be held as a reserve. But we're quibbling over something that wouldn't even come into play for 20 or 30 years. Fact is, this is basically, we can eliminate excess earnings from consideration, I believe. So this may trigger the Board of Retirement revisiting its current policy.
I agree. We've spent several meetings on excess earnings that I don't know if you're aware of. Inhashing this policy out of retirement board meetings, and that's why I was saying.
Actually, I reviewed the minutes. I am aware.
Okay, I didn't see anybody rush to the microphone on this agenda item. We do have a motion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Don't we have to do roll call?
Can I call roll call?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Camper?
Yes.
Chair Turey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now we're on to agenda item four, and that is a place order to allow for discussion in possible direction staff regarding potential action by the Board Supervisors and the Insira Board of Retirement to reduce long-term pension costs in the county retirement system. I'll go ahead and start this off. One of the outstanding questions I have is, has to do with the employee contribution rate. As most of you here probably know, at this point, all the bargaining units have agreed to pay the employee normal costs or they're part of the normal cost. So for example, in the most recent contract negotiations, the Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Management of Public Safety agreed to pay the employee share of the pension plan. And the Board of Supervisors applauded them in doing that. And we appreciate the fact that they incorporated that into the last contract negotiations. There is one exception, and that is there is still one category of county employees who do not contribute the employee share into the pension plan, and that is the employees who have worked for the county or for public agencies in general in excess of 30 years. The Board Supervisors, the latest information we were given was currently there are 34 employees, and that is costing the pension plan about $400,000 plus in the most recent year. That's a pretty expensive benefit for 34 people. And so one of the outstanding questions that I have, and I think the Board probably has, is what could be done to close this final loophole where 34 employees are not paying their employee share into the pension plan? My reading of the 1937 Act, there's not a specific provision that says after 30 years, if you're in a 1937 pension plan, you don't have to pay if adopted by authorized supervisors. There's simply a generic caveat that says the county could agree to pay a portion of or all of the employee share. And it's under that general allowance that at some point in the past, I don't know, 10, 20 years, at some point in the past, the county opted to pick up that cost. As we all know with the Pepper reform, it does say that in 2018, the county can impose, perhaps through, meet confirm might be required, but can impose that the employees pay half of the normal cost. So that might answer the question that maybe in 2018, the Board of Supervisors could simply impose it on the employees after 30 years of service and they pay half of the normal cost. But I would like to know if there's anything we've done in time to have, and so we may not, I'm not expecting the answers today, but that's something I would like to put out there. I'd like to see a legal response given to the Board of Supervisors. What are the options that we have? I believe this is something that's on the county side and not necessarily on the employees, on the retirement side. Are there any other ideas or questions that seem to be outstanding that we don't have a legal answer to, but we need additional staff resources to get an answer to?
On that topic, Supervisor?
On any topic.
If I may, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things about, one of the basic things we need to know, one of the basic things we need to know about how your benefits are paid out is to, is to know that 80% of your benefits will not come from county contributions or from employee contributions. They'll come from what our system makes in the stock and bond markets, which goes to my point. I may be alone on this board, but I have to vocalize this nonetheless. I think that, I think our global economy is in a lot of trouble. I think we are at end-stage capitalism. I am not sanguine about the stock market anytime soon. We've had quantitative easing quadruple our money supply in a zero-interest-rate bond environment. I think our portfolio needs to invest at least in some small part in the people of Mendocino County. Ross Liberty just bought 65 acres of the Masonite plant with financing from the savings bank. I think it was a $1.6 million deal. In a perfect world, I'd like to be able to see entrepreneurs like Ross Liberty be able to have their ventures funded by a set aside in our retirement system and our portfolio for our people, our local people, local business. John Corey's organization, his Kickstarter fund would be funding a wool mill. That's a great deal for everybody. We have a slaughterhouse that needs to be funded. We have a cannabis industry that's about to be de-primed and to take off, and not just the intoxicant part of cannabis, but the medical part, the cannaboyes. All these represent very good opportunities. A county bank, a big believer in public banking, could be capitalized possibly in a perfect world by a retirement system. These are investments that diversify our portfolio. They could be regarded as alternative investments. They're well within what other systems do in a 5% or 10% allocation. And they are direct investments in the people of Mendocino County, which I think is where the real returns will be going forward into the future. Thank you.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing if the Board of Retirement has the ability to make some amount of local investment. I think that's a worthwhile thing to explore. One thing that everybody doesn't realize, many of the decisions, and it was accurately characterized earlier, that the county makes decisions about paying benefits and at times in the past, hasn't made the best decisions or hasn't created a sustainable way to fund them. The Board of Retirement is in charge of investing the money that it receives, but it also controls a number of policies. And, but, I'll try and make this quick. But both boards are hampered by an inability to make truly fundamental changes in how the overall system of public employee pensions is set up. So there's, at this point, there are a few incremental changes that could be made by either board. One of those does involve how the cost of living adjustment is calculated for current retirees. Supervisor Turey had a very modest and realistic proposal to change the COLA to reflect conditions more comparable to Mendocino County rather than the Bay Area. Unfortunately, on a narrow vote, the Board of Retirement did not support that.
That's about the only minor quibble that I could have with decisions made over the last seven years in terms of were they fiduciarily responsible in terms of protecting the pension system, but I, I would hope that that's something that would be revisited, and I also appreciate Supervisor Jurey raising the issue of the 30-year employees no longer contributing. But I think we need to be realistic, that both for the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Retirement, we're really nibbling around the edges, and that for the most part, we're doing the best that can be done with the current set of rules. And I just want to reemphasize one point that Lee Far made, not all that is the same. So the county is not required to fund the entire unfunded liability in one year. The payments that are made out to the employees are made out monthly over their lifetimes. Those payments have been made, will be made, they're an absolute obligation on the county. No one need fear that their pension won't be paid, it's irresponsible to suggest otherwise.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say a number of things. First, I want to be clear to thank the Retirement Board. I know that you all work very hard, and there are sparks that fly, and we see the smoke, and I appreciate the healthy debate and differences of opinion. That's a great democratic process on a very important issue, so I support you, no matter which side you're on, the 12 sides on the board. So thank you very much, please keep it up. Please try to sit us at our board more specifics, even little steps, I think small steps are very important, and each one, you'll see like some of Chair Jurey's ideas will be debated, and there's a group that won't want it. We have to have the courage to take these small steps when we can find a majority vote to do so, because in future years, it makes a difference. The few things we've been able to say that we have accomplished, or the Board has accomplished, have been very important. So solving any problem isn't like, here's the answer, we're done. It's like, well, here's a little answer in raising our awareness. I'd like to encourage us all to meet again this year. If we meet, I think it gives the retired people that we're trying to reassure an opportunity to speak and realize that we're working on it, and raises a collective consciousness that it's not a secret, and there's no plot, and we're all working sincerely to find an answer, or a number of small answers to move forward. So I'd encourage more meetings. Of course, I would support secure local investments, that's very logical in a changing world. Let's take risks on ourself, but they'll be very secure risks, and know who we're belonging to and the value of what we have here. The other things I'd like to talk about would be to take a look at the lowering the expected rate of return another quarter percent, what that would mean. I know that cuts into our money and makes us all feel poorer, but it's a logical thing we can do with your guidance and taking the time to do it correctly. The other question I was hoping we could discuss at some point is the idea of bankruptcies. They will just declare bankruptcies. My understanding that, that generally doesn't wipe out this pension obligation that we have. We can speak about it, and get those facts, and give them to the public, and even answer some of the questions that to us or to you, if your minds seem silly, but if we can get the correct information to the public, it raises the level of all our discussion, and again, we're all working towards the same answer. We don't have two sides fighting totally different battles here. We all feel committed to keep our word to the employees as well as we can. Thank you very much.
If we don't have any, go ahead, Richard.
Sure. Supervisor Woodhouse mentioned Jane did the assumed rate of return by a quarter percent, and I can't remember the number, we just, we talked about this about a year ago, what that would mean to a county budget if that were redone.
Thirty million.
On an annual basis, 1 million for 25.25 reduction. Okay, thank you. And I think, you know, things get tossed around about services that don't get done, about bankruptcy and so forth, and there's got to be a point in time when some investigation of what those really mean. You go to your DOT and talk to Howard, he can give you the price of not doing a road this year so you can pay your debt, and how much that road will be in 10 years if you don't pay, if you don't fix it now. And you can do a cost analysis based on the use of money for paying this pension obligation versus doing the roads. I think that's a pretty simple one to look at, and I think actually getting some legal documentation of what bankruptcy would look like in Mendocino County, based on the fact that we are paying our bills here, you have a plan to pay your bills here, and we're not in dire need of not meeting payroll. You know, bankruptcy, technically bankrupt, technically bankrupt is you're not paying your bills, but we're paying our bills. And, and nobody wants to be saddled with this, but I think the Retirement Board has worked very hard with Siegel, I think I've been on the board now four years, these guys came on before I did, our investment counselors came on before I did, I served on a board, and it was 15 years ago, that this board is so much improved on what it's doing, who it's working with, and kind of the vision it has for the future. And I would just want to join in the concept that I'll, there's nothing I can do to make sure that our dollars are sent, fed wisely, and that everybody that works for the county that is currently working, as well as those retired, will get the benefits they've been
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I also want to say that I appreciate this meeting, I appreciate all the work that is done on both sides of me. I'm especially glad to hear Mr. Sakowitz and two of my fellow board members talk about local investment. I first suggested local investment to Retirement Board in 1982, and almost got thrown out of the room. I'm glad to hear that now it's becoming a little more popular, and I think one of the reasons for that goes back to what Mr. Sakowitz reminded us, which is that 80% of the money to fund the system comes from investment. And any of us who have watched the stock market in 2016, and watched approximately $3 trillion drain out of that market in such a brief period of time, know that if that's where 80% of our money to pay our retirement bills is coming from, it's not, it doesn't give me a great deal of confidence. So I think at the very least, the idea of diversification of the portfolio and not depending entirely on Wall Street, and you know, people have spoken to that today, Wall Street is not a reliable source for funding the system into, you know, far into the future. I know we're not going to move out of it entirely, but I think diversification would be a very good idea. And I also think that both sides of this argument are kind of right. You know, I find myself kind of agreeing with John Dickerson, and agreeing with Ted Stevens, and you know, I know what they're saying has a lot of validity to it, and looking at not having this, this big hunk of debt paid until 2040, many of us around this table aren't even going to be around when this debt is finally paid, and of course, we pile up, you know, even more debts as we go forward, so, you know, and depending on, on a stable stock market to come up with that yearly payment, those tens of millions of dollars every year, is a very tough proposition. I do feel though that we are, I know this sounds trite, but we are doing the best we can to provide services to the people of Mendocino County while we do the obligations we have with the retirees. Supervisor McCollum said that, you know, the real solution to this problem unfortunately is not around this table, it's with the state government, maybe to some extent with the federal government, and then the courts. And most judges do not want to do away with retirement systems as they go right now, because judges, last time I lived, had pretty generous retirement packages. So, you know, trying to get substantive change that will really turn this around is not easy. I keep saying we need perestroika right here in the United States, we need a whole restructuring of the way this economy works, so that it works for the normal, you know, retiring people, people drawing pensions in this county, who are getting $30,000, $40,000 a year. And what do they do with that money? They're spending it, and that was pointed out by another speaker today. They're spending it on housing, they're spending it on food, they're spending it at the hardware store. You know, that money is going back into our economy. So, you know, those are just a few of my thoughts. I do think that we've taken a lot of steps as a Board of Supervisors to try to get our fiscal shit more in order, and I think some of those ratings that Treasurer spoke about are indicative of that. And on the other hand, I agree with the people who've said that the rating agencies have been proven totally wrong in the past, and that may come about again. So it's a mixed bag, but you know, I think we go forward and we try to provide the best services we can with the money we have to our, to our taxpayers in this county, and to continue to, to make good on our obligations to the people who have worked for us for so many years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We do have a few speaker cards on this agenda item, I don't know if you spoke earlier, that's okay too. If you want to speak now, get up and speak now.
I'm Neelam Soren again, and I just want to say, the gentleman on, yes, I don't know your name, sir.
My name's Tom.
Tom, okay. Thank you. We have to reach out, because ultimately, this whole problem is on us, we the taxpayers, we the people. We have not done our job, we have not watched what's going on, and so the buck stops with us. We are responsible for this mess, but it would really be nice if we could have conversation and discourse. Thank you for reaching out, because in the, in the past, some of the people who, you know, ask questions, make a noise, have been demonized, you know, these are troublemakers, these are, I've heard some not very nice things about some people, and we're all in this together, so why are we demonizing each other? Okay? The gentleman on this side of Kerry, I don't know your name, sir, but you know what? Please don't tell us this thing is complicated, we know it's complicated, we are not stupid. We know there are many, many parts, and they are all variable parts in a pension fund. There's no static number, we know it's complicated, but there is a problem. And when you said we cut off the, cut off people's retirement plan and save money, you know, that was a promise made to people. People were promised, I know it wasn't really part of the, the benefits, but Department heads have told me, they were told, to tell people they were promised retirement health insurance, and then suddenly, the runt was pulled out from under them. So you know what? I don't think that was very nice. You people promised something and you took it away, yes, there was no money for it, but people were promised things. Number two, keeping that interest rate higher, the assumption rate higher, no, I'd rather see it lower, I'd rather see a bigger deficit, so we know what the reality is. We shouldn't be hiding and showing a smaller number if the number is bigger. Let's see what the real thing is, and let's tackle it. You know, because otherwise, five years down the road, it's not going to be 182 million, oh, you know, the rate should come down now to 5%, and now it's gone up to 300 million. You know, let's see what it is today, let's be real about everything, let's be honest about everything. And the last thing is, we're not here to hear our own voices, all of us who've spoken, you know, we can talk to our friends, we don't have to stand here talking and hearing ourselves. We'd like to have a discourse, we'd like to have conversation, and we'd like answers.
My name's John Almeida, and I've worked for the Department of Transportation for over 20 years, I am a retired member now. And for any of you that don't know out here in the public, most of the money that's been on your roads comes from federal and state taxes, not from counties. There's a certain percentage that does, and in some years, if the county wants to hold it back, they can. So I want to let you know, because I know it's an important factor. Unless you're a criminal, you don't deal much with the Sheriff's Department, but most everybody here has an investment in their county roads, so it is important to remember this, most year funds for county roads do not come from this county. The other thing is, if you're worried about a 1929 crash, there's ways to hedge this with a small investment, whether it be from the County Board of Supervisors with general funds, or whether it be from the Retirement Board. Now Retirement Boards and the Siegel Company don't like this, because everything is to be invested to make profit. There's times when you worry about a situation which you need to hedge, just like the man that stood up here with a dollar bill and told us it was a promissory note, he's right, we're not backed by gold anymore like we used to be. But the county of Mendocino can take that in their own hands, and I'll talk to anybody who wants to talk to about that later, I've already talked to Dr. Will Banks. You know, my retiree meant, meant a lot to me. I took the cut in wages, come to work for the county. And when I got called out in the middle of night, and my coworkers got called out in the middle of night, and I did work for DOT, we responded, we responded to snow on the road, we bladed it off, we responded by sanding iced roads, we responded by cutting up and removing dead, dropped trees in the middle of the night, when it was dark and dangerous, and moved these things off the road so that not only that everyone here could pass, but so you would have police protection that could pass, and you'd have fire protection that could pass, and that you would have emergency medical, that would pass. And I take my retirement very serious. I'm paying $700 for healthcare, and I'm going to eat that to help this board, both boards. But I don't like seeing my other benefits being chalked at, and that includes CPI, which I paid tens of thousands of dollars into my own account, and I don't want to see the CPI changed. When you pay two retirements for people who make $70,000 and above, middle management and managers, past $150,000, do you realize that, folks? There are two retirements paid in this county, and we need to put all that money into one fund for one defined benefit, if we're worried about it going down. And then we also, after we hedge, then we need to go by what our experienced people like Dr. Will Banks, and our board, and our Board of Supervisors, and yes, it's going to go out a few years. You know what? And if your children are going to pay taxes, well, they're going to pay it to the state and Fed too. If you read it, it'd be a lot better paying it right here in Mendocino County, because we're going to pay for the funds and services and the tax dollars that go back into our county. And when Mr. Ross Liberty would like some commercial put in there, you need to help him, because I've worked in industry, 21 years before I came to the county, I worked in industry, and you may not fulfill old Masonite site for 40 years. To help him be able to make his dream come true, and your dream come true, you need to be able to provide commercial which gets in there within two or three years and starts putting tax base. And I'll tell you something else, a lot of times I had to get asphalt out of this county to do jobs. You got a 70-year-old plant, the only one in Mendocino County, but nobody wants to put one on the hill where the trucks go up empty, where less smog, and come down loaded, and go in both directions and all directions to the county, but we got a bunch of individuals in this county that are against any kind of growth. And to me, it seems like people want to make alcohol for alcohol, olics and drugs for drugs, but I grew up, and my family's been over here 100 years in this county, when timber was king, and farming, my cousins picked apricots and potter ballet, and different fruit and pears. Where's all that? You better get a local economy for agriculture, because when my family came here in 1911, they grew all the food for the little stores, before there were Safeway stores, right here in Mendocino County. One of them sat on this board, Mr. Jurey, at your spot, from 1965 to 1977, Mr. August Avila, a direct descendant of my family.
We do have, we do have one other speaker card from Dennis Liberty, but any-
We do have, we do have one other speaker card from Dennis Liberty, but anybody else can go up and speak.
Good sir.
Okay, you passed. Okay. So I'd like to wrap up this agenda item. We have had a couple of requests for staff to do some research. Specifically, I was requesting that we look into the legal options for the exemption for people who worked 30 years or more that still exists. And I don't know if we had anything else that was really a research question for staff. There are more options that are coming forward that don't really require more research. As was mentioned earlier, the new actuarial will look at a number of changes, including looking at the fact that people are living longer. And frankly, I think that's a really much needed change and an important change in the new study. And looking, going forward, if people are, you know, if projections are people are going to live longer than they are today, let's incorporate that conservatively into the new plan. Are there any requests on the retirement side?
Chair Jurdie.
Other than we've continued to kick the can down the road, we have a ship that's listing on one side and we just rearranged the chairs a little bit. This is the Titanic, it's sinking. That's the reason it's listing. We're talking about rearranging the chairs a little bit. It's not going to get chopped down. The longer we wait, the greater work risk. I'll say it again. How many times do you accept what we're being told to do? It continues to grow our debt. It's not getting better. It's continuing to get worse. We all know that assumptions that are being used now are incorrect. You kick the can down the road, at some point, there's no coming back. This is the opportunity to address it today, to put something in place to look at this and solve the problem. We didn't, I don't have any, I didn't have any confidence on our actuarial report, as nice as these people are, I respect them. I don't have any confidence at all in the process. As a financial guy, I look at the numbers, the trend, it's pretty quick. If you have half a brain and look at the trend, you know you've got a real problem. Right now, we're continuing that. This is the opportunity to take steps to fix it. We've talked about it since 2008 when I got involved. There's a point where there's no coming back.
Chair Jurdie. If it pleases the board, with regard to direction of staff researching, again, I wish I had a little bit more research on what, how retirement systems are making alternative investments in local economy. It's not, it's not a fringe idea anymore. I have been to enough SACRAS conferences and enough CALIBRES conferences to notice. Senoma, Legal Counsel Jeff Burke comes from Senoma. I know from attending their investment committee meetings that they've invested in timberland and in ag land. So this is not fringe investment anymore. It's becoming more mainstream, more accepted. I just wish I had both boards have a little bit more research, a little more empirical data on what other retirement systems are doing to allocate at least some small part of their portfolio to local investment. Thank you.
And in view of the hour, I want to ask for the answer now, but I would very much appreciate if Commissioner Stevens would provide a list of the concrete steps that these boards should be taking to solve the problem because that's what you've asked us to do. Please provide the list of the concrete steps we need to take so that both boards can consider that.
You don't want your answer now?
I don't think you have one, other than you're saying lower the assumed rate of return, but again, rather than have a debate, rather than have a debate tonight, please provide us with a memo of the concrete steps.
You know, I've been with this process for Supervisor for a long time. I saw last year, the Citizens Committee put together, it was talked about today, I think I heard, I'm not aware of exactly how many, but I think I heard 400 signatures. So I've been, I've seen this rodeo several times before. What confidence do I have if I put together a list that there's going to be any action on it? I'll put together a list, but I don't have, there doesn't seem to be any commitment. There doesn't seem to be any commitment from my board. This is a problem that is continuing to grow. We have a full market recovery, we're 70% funded. It's, we've just gone into a correction, maybe towards fair territory. I've talked to all of her, it went to addressing. I am very concerned about the pensions for this county. I am very concerned about the commitment. I heard very clearly that you say that no pensions are going to be cut, but I heard in the other breath that on healthcare, we cut them. So I understand you mean that you don't want, and you really sincerely mean you don't want to cut any pensions, but again, I've seen that rodeo. I've seen people that said they had their healthcare benefits promised and it all evaporated. So I leave here, I've put an incredible amount of energy in this process. We continue to kick the can down the road. I will put together a list, but I have to say, I leave very dismayed, very worried about our accounting, very worried about our ability to pay our obligations. So thank you for having me here, but I don't, nothing changed. It's still the same. We're still doing the exact same thing that created the situation.
Well, I'd just like to go to some closing remarks. We are making changes slowly. Earlier today, the Board adopted, the Board of Retirement adopted its work plan for the staff, various small staff for the Retirement Association. And included in that was a report to the public, to the board, to the Board of Supervisors, a report of how it is that we have this unfunded liability. We heard a partial explanation from the actuarials, although we're looking for something in greater detail than that. The only way to prevent us from repeating events dates of the past is for all of us to fully understand how we got to this point. And that's, that's a big piece of the embrace that we need. Also, I do believe we will be lowering the assumed rate of return again. We'll see how far we go, how quickly. We know when it will take place, it'll be after the next actuarial study. We're not allowed to lower the assumed rate of return until there is another study. Also, as we mentioned, a more realistic perhaps look at the longevity of current employees would also increase the amount of money that both the county and the employees would be contributing to the plan. And again, we need the actuarial study to adopt new figures. I think both those things will happen in the new plan and that will help sustain the plan in the future. Any other remarks you'd like to make?
Chair Jurdie. Thank you. I won't be long-winded like my colleagues and get into debate, but somewhere along the line, we didn't thank the public for being here. We had a full room and I do truly appreciate those that have taken the time out of their day, those that have spoke. There's been quite a bit of debate that we've had, but it's all positive to come to good decisions. We may disagree. It may, final results of any vote may be different from what you like and I like, but this is how our democracy works. So I thank each one of you for being here. Hope you don't stay away, Neelam. You need to come help us make all these serious decisions because they are serious and long term in their impacts, but thank you everyone for being here. Thank you.